Is my lead in the meeting or? I'll start, I'll open it up.
Yeah, I don't know. I know OB was not gonna be able to make it most likely, so um and then Jerry was our advisors, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But Steve. He said he was gonna be here a little late.
Sounds great, okay, okay. Okay, uh it's two o'clock, um I'm gonna open this joint planning county commission workshop. On. And I'm gonna turn it over to Elise Martin, our planning and zoning director to get us going.
Sure.
It's it's a workshop we'll have.
Well, it was on your agenda.
Oh.
Will be later, at the four o'clock.
We.
It said two o'clock citizens. That's your normal.
No, I kind of it's four o'clock.
We usually don't have a citizen here at workshops, but I I will.
Have them on your. I was told it was better to come at two than four for those reasons, well, I may have to come back to four.
Four is pretty tight, Mary.
Would you prefer that? I'll be happy to come back.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
I misunderstood your agenda, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, um.
Alyssa, yes, yeah. Okay, thank you. So in the agenda packet, um or in the agenda summary, rather, I did just kind of summarize the background of this process and where, you know, how this came about, just being that we've been tracking these updates. A long list of updates for a while now in the planning department um from just our own experience and working with the land use code and trying to implement it, and then also getting feedback from commissioners and planning commissioners. So at this point, I what I did was I took kind of your the the feedback from planning commission from our last meeting, and then also county commission when I presented this, that big list, and I kind of was trying to whittle down like what do we really want to be focusing on? So I tried as best as I could to create a list of more high priority updates that we could tackle. Sooner rather than later within this one hundred and eighty day period that we are in right now for amending the land use code. Um and then I realized that also there were there were some um emails input from commissioners that came in a little bit after the the agenda deadline, so I wasn't able to incorporate those, but I've added those to the list now as well um for discussion, so I can just uh share my screen here. And we can get get into the first one on the list.
Um while you're bringing that up, I think that a lot of things on the list are kind of like tweaking the existing uh. Or the majority of them are kind of existing, tweaking the existing code, and um I think that there's been some conversation about some like bigger, broader like redos, and so just um.
Yeah.
When like those kind of things about like the different uh zoning classifications and.
Yeah, actually, that's on my list to talk about, but I think we could just get that out of the way now so that that we can kind of set the context, because the first thing on the list was the CUPs, but that's gonna be a pretty long conversation probably for could be involved. So rather than um. Waiting until later to talk about that, I did wanna bring up that, and Alicia, I don't I can't share my screen at the moment, so just let me have a chance.
You're good.
We do have, we are addressing the commercial zoning districts in the future land use plan. So it's been brought up, it was brought up at the last commission meeting, and then in some um input from commissioners that we really do need to kind of refocus or redistribute some of the uses in our commercial corridor to kind of create a little bit more logic, um a little better in terms of, I think what happened was, you know, if you look at the zoning map, it's just this long corridor of highway commercials, just very. It's it, I don't think there was a lot of thought that was put into that, it was just kind of, this is where it was kind of the basic logic area, logical area for highway commercial in general, but there wasn't a lot of nuance in thinking about how you can create different zone, commercial zoning districts and little pockets of different commercial uses. And that's what we've been talking about with the future land use plan. And so in terms of breaking up highway commercial and creating space for um more general business or neighborhood compatible commercial, that's that is being addressed through that process, the long range planning process, so I do have a map to share with you that shows that. Um and one of the really big things to be thinking that we've been thinking about um in terms of the uh putting into context the commercial uses along the highway is the fact that we do have this planned frontage road. I mean, and um more and more we talk to UDOT, there's a lot of, there's a lot of motivation to um get this, the some of the frontage road sections built sooner than later. So if you can see that there, there it's in the kind of blue turquoise color. Uh along the this corridor, so it it stretches based on the last concept study that UDOT did. It would start at the intersection of Spanish Trail Road, and it's on either side, this is not a very good representation of it, there's a better map online from UDOT, but they actually show the alignments on both sides of the highway for the frontage roads, and there's um bike paths, shared use path on both sides as well. Planned, and so it goes from Spanish Trail Road all the way out to Mill Creek Road and a little bit further for the bike paths. And so one of the things we've talked about is creating, like thinking about some of the commercial uses along this corridor as being more pedestrian friendly and not necessarily just a strip of highway commercial, but actually more of that kind of uh general business, neighborhood commercial type of um development that you can have. Your your retail or commercial buildings kind of fronting the um the street and having access to the shared use pathway, and then having parking either to the side or behind, so it's not just a land of parking lots. Um, so this is, the pink is general business. And then, of course, red is highway commercial, so this would be a big change, this is just the draft version right now. Um, sorry, my cursors. But all of this up north is still highway commercial in this draft future land use plan, um and then there's more highway commercial down here where the frontage road would end. Um and then even down further where we have some sitro lands, we wanted to, you know, propose some fu- future land uses in those areas, which would include some highway commercial buffered with general business and then neighborhood commercial. And then even down further, thinking about the possibility of um designating some neighborhood compatible and possibly even general business down in the South Valley area. This is all just, again, very hypothetical, not finalized.
Can I ask a question?
Uh sure.
Uh what what's the difference between like general business and highway commercial?
Yes, okay. So that I very good question, um let me go back to the. So we have our future land use designations, um that we've worked on quite a lot with the uh planning commission and also some input from mission and the public workshops that we've been going to or that we've been um conducting over the last couple of years. Uh, so in these, we have the breakdown of what uh neighborhood mixed use would look like, that's the neighborhood compatible commercial, general business, so in here we talk about um the future land use plan proposing general business to be designated along the section of of Highway one ninety-one, whether frontage roads are planned to be constructed on both sides of the highway, the idea would be to zoom in a little bit. Sorry.
Well, I mean, we we have a current zone called general business, but is this future land use designation something different?
It would be a little bit different, um right now, actually, general business is is kind of geared towards this um or arrangement of the buildings on the lots where there's actually no setbacks in general business. So it's meant to be one of those kinds of uh districts where you have the buildings could be really anywhere, but they could be all the way up to the sidewalk, you know, like the downtown main street. Um, I think we would wanna, that's what we're using the consultants to help advise us on is creating the develop the the actual standards for these commercial um future land use designations to make sure that they fit in the county perspective, you know, in a rural setting on the frontage road versus like downtown main street in Mila, because there's some definite differences. Um, so to just to kind of go on here with this, the idea would be to steer development along this section into a more pedestrian friendly direction. Plan burnage roads include a multi-use pedestrian pathway and offer an opportunity for commercial activity which can be accept accessed by both foot or by car. Buildings would front the street with minimal front yard setbacks, forcing parking areas to be to the side of the buildings and or to the rear of the lot. The types of businesses encouraged in general business would be a wide array of recreational, personal services, retail, professional services and entertainment. Examples would include medium sized grocery stores, markets, restaurants, bars, movie theater, business, government offices, banks, credit unions, recreation, outfitters, limited repair services. As opposed to highway commercial, which is um allows for more of the auto dependent services for both residents, tourists, transit motorists, blah, blah, blah. The purpose is to provide regional retail and commercial services with convenient controlled access parking without increasing traffic burdens on the adjacent streets. Uses primarily for the major highway corridors to provide more intense commercial uses such as light manufacturing, auto related services, fuel stops, repair shops, car washes, car dealerships, motorized outfitters, large retailer supermarkets. Gateway interest features uh are encouraged, um then just kind of goes on with some more fluff, but that's, does that kind of give you this sense of what?
So can I ask you a question?
Like a transition from like auto oriented to kind of more pedestrian oriented commercial.
Right, but we have a whole slew of residents who own commercial property all along that corridor you're talking, and they're waiting for the frontage roads to be installed, and then you're gonna tell them that you're downgrading.
We're not, we wouldn't be doing that, that's not part of, that's not what the future land use plan does itself, that would be a whole different conversation. If if the county wanted to force down zones, that's a whole different conversation. The future land use plan just projects out twenty, thirty years, what could this possibly do in the future? If people decided willingly to apply for a rezone, we would look at the future land use map and see, oh, yeah, this was designated for the general direction of going into more.
We have to be careful here, you're pushing the highway commercial further out, I mean, almost to the San Juan County line by your map.
There's a whole.
Just across the line, they can't get a gas station in, the love's truck stop, but we're gonna allow them on our side of the line, I mean, that's in your designation, gas stalls.
Quite a big highway commercial closer to the end as well.
I know, I agree that there is, but I'm saying you can't take it away from people.
Well, this is all part of the conversation.
With a slash of a pin here.
Definitely not a finalized plan, and this is all part of the process that we're using the consultants for. Um, having the dialogue and the conversation about what this all should look like, but this is one proposed idea that we kind of that has been devised.
General plans don't change, so they just show you areas that may be allowed to have a different zoning on top of it. But a general plan does not change this up.
Thank you.
Look, I mean, I I guess I wanna agree with Bill a little bit, I mean, this is certainly heading into the direction of changing the allowed uses on these.
Yeah.
You know, it's an it's an initial step, and if we thought that we would never wanna do that, then I don't think we would be coming up with plans like this, so. I agree with that part of what Bill said, I I think this is consequential, I I think we do need to do it, I I I think the current zoning along one ninety-one corridor doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and it it needs to be more focused and organized, and you know, zones zones change, so I I guess I disagree with your statement that once a use is permitted on a parcel, it can never be taken away, I mean, that's it's not a legal principle, we we've done it many times in the past, and you know, we should think think about it, but it I just. It sounded like you were maybe saying that's a bright line you shouldn't cross, I think.
Well, I I would say that rather than organizing a group of people who have this grand vision of what it should look like out there and not actually having the landowner come in, when you say, well, we're gonna change this, you can only have air dressers here now, you're no longer allowed to have a transfer station.
Yeah.
The county owns property there, so.
That's not what this is at all.
That has to go through a public hearing.
It may not just a public hearing, but we have to engage the property owners that own those lands.
And we have, we've 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 had several workshops throughout the years, and we've had people, landowners come, and we had ones focused just on commercial uses in the commercial corridor. And, you know, some of this input, some of that input was applied to this map, and some of it was based on just general good planning sense, and the fact that we are having the frontage roads coming into this area, and that it is an opportunity for something to create something a little bit more user friendly for the residents of Spanish Valley, a little bit more accessible with without cars, all of those kinds of things. So those those are all, there's a lot of different principles that go into kind of coming up with this idea, and it's it we definitely wanna take the consideration of the public in mind, and we are continuing to do that, especially with the consultants on board. Now, we're gonna be doing some um more public outreach online and then some workshops additionally, once we get this more in a finalized stage.
Oh, sorry, cut in.
You guys did a lot of workshops reaching out to the public, and you've had it online, so.
Well, public and property owners are two different things. And I disagree with the fact that we can change somebody's designation without involving them.
Well, it's not changing their designation, but it's.
But we shouldn't.
Where this this is, this process is part of the general plan, it's a, it's conceptual, it's ideas, it's not in the code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure, well, but back to the transfer station, you show that it's pink there, which is, does it qualify anymore with the way that we're looking at this? I mean, we're not gonna force the county's own transfer station to do something different.
So as I said, this map would go into the general plan, so it would be a guiding document, a guiding map, not, because it wouldn't change zoning. It could change zoning if somebody wanted to come in and say, I wanna rezone my property to whatever.
I like that concept.
Yeah.
That's actually happened a number of times where people have come in and said, hey, well, I wanna change my property to this, and we've even looked at this map and said, yeah, you know what, that looks like it could fit in the future land use plan, but it's not finalized yet, we've sent it back to.
Wait.
Yeah, back to wait, so I think as a guide, it's a, it's a good resource.
Sure. Mike? Sorry, a couple of points, uh you said front of the road both sides.
Uh huh.
Uh in speaking with, I I know conceptual, in speaking with UDOT, uh many entrances to off.
Mm hmm.
Off highway to frontage road, I I would see many entrances happening, you know, four or five.
Have you seen, have you seen that concept?
I haven't seen their concept.
Yeah.
Uh but in that also, um a path on both sides, or like the multi-use path, uh are we thinking, because I haven't seen that, are you thinking like big sidewalk?
Uh more like the, it's more similar to like the Spanish Valley shared use pathway.
Yeah.
That is being worked on now.
Okay.
So a separated path. Pathway that would go along, but.
Okay.
I don't know, we have.
I'm just thinking Richfield downtown, that giant sidewalk they have on both sides of their main street.
Uh huh.
Off of the front of road, this.
Right.
Is what I have in mind.
Yeah.
Because I haven't seen the.
As in a good thing or not, not good?
I like classic main streets because I like cars, and I like dragging uh classic main street, but.
Yeah.
Uh just providing a lot of thoroughfare to businesses is is a good thing.
For sure.
Cars in front of buildings.
Mm hmm.
Literally McDonald's runs odds off of, they can pick a clicker out and click. Every hundred cars that passes, three of those cars will turn into a McDonald's.
Mm hmm.
Uh they know that, they do their math off of that.
Right.
I mean, so do future business owners of the hair shop, or, you know, as long as we help that business put cars, uh I mean, but with no cars.
Mm hmm.
I mean, there's no odd chance of business, so.
Well, yeah, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't um prohibit cars at all, it would be a, it would be totally accessible for cars, just like any road, any commercial area, but also accessible for pedestrians, much more so than what we have right now.
Correct.
Yeah, for people on bikes.
You correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but I I don't think we have a whole lot of choice about the front of the road, I think.
Oh.
Like you you dot has a lot of authority within the road, so right away, they wanna keep highway moving fast.
Yeah.
But we're developing along the sides, and I think the only realistic solution is a frontage road, so that you can separate from like the local traffic from people just wanna go through. Um, and and so I I think we can have influence on what type of frontage road is happening, has things like that, but I don't think we can just say, nah, we got nothing for you. Mike.
No, I I I like the front of the road.
Yeah.
I just want as many. That's why businesses are on Main Street.
Well, I think it will actually help the the, it will help that more so, because the frontage roads will be separated from the, you know, the highway will still be going down the middle, right?
Yeah.
And so on each side, the frontage roads will make it a lot easier for people to pull in and out of those businesses along the way.
Yeah.
Instead of just, you know, blasting down the highway and having these kind of dangerous situations, really, to try to access some of those properties. So, yeah.
Truck ride in. Understand.
Yeah, I can, I don't wanna waste time like trying to find that or the GIS map that they've done, they have it online where you can see, and you can zoom in and see like the actual alignment of where the road is, and then compared to like the like the shared use pathway. I'll send you the link, I'll send it to you also, yeah, it's interesting for sure. Um, but more and more with the conversations with UDOT is there, we are working on a new access management agreement with them because a lot of the smaller businesses or employee housing like the ADOs of a few of them were not able to, they pulled out of the process because they couldn't get the UDOT access permit because they would have had to put in a a turning lane.
Right.
Something very expensive infrastructure wise that was basically cost prohibitive. And so one of the alternatives that Dan and I have been pushing for more in working with UDOT is, and they're they're happy to work with us on it, is that instead of putting in a turning lane to actually build out a little section of the frontage road where it aligns with an intersection going into the valley, so that you can access the little development off of the side road and then onto a frontage, the section of the frontage road. So there's already little sections that are gonna probably get built out, and it seems like the more we do that, the more it might, it might have to actually happen all. The build out might ha- happen faster for the whole thing.
And if you wanna look at where that already is, Rim Village has put in, I mean, through. And they have, yeah, we talked about where they have.
Mm hmm, yeah, that's right.
They have put that in as part of their development, and they work with you done.
Yes. So that kind of gives you the context for the where we're at with the commercial planning process, um. The, I did wanna mention, the consultants are tentatively planning to be here the week of June seventeenth, I haven't confirmed that yet, but they did wanna have some working sessions with some commissioners and get, they do some interviews and get more input on your perspectives. So I hope to be setting that up soon. Um, as far as getting back to our kind of agenda, workshop agenda, the does that kind of answer your question in terms of what we'd be covering and?
Yeah, it sounds like that's kind of with the consultants coming down the pipe, that's kind of freshly.
And it is like the commercial use, the changing up commercial use or, you know, messing with the zoning districts and actually doing zone changes, that's a lot more impactful, obviously, um. We do wanna have some more nuance in the commercial zones, but I think it's a lot more complex and just, it's not an easy fix, it's not a quick fix to go in and just, you know, redo a bunch of commercial zoning um through the zoning zoning map amendments, I don't, that's my perspective, but.
Yeah, no, I I definitely get that, and I I just didn't wanna get bogged down with like how tall things should be.
Right.
When there's a lot bigger issues.
Exactly. Yes, I appreciate that. Um, okay, so do anybody else have any thoughts on that topic before we move on?
Sorry.
Okay.
Any uh any thoughts to north of the the city limits?
Um.
The bridge.
We haven't been focusing too much on the north corridor, you know, there was a lot of planning that had gone on previous to my time, like the small area plan.
Okay.
Around that area, um.
I'd look.
But there is.
To piggyback on that, on your uh future projects list that you just created, that was a great resource, and I saw the big travel plaza for Crescent Junction, and that was news to me, and so I think kind of looking at that area, seeing that there's interest in kind of highway development along seventy, but that would be a good thing to to look at, that now applies certain one south.
Right.
Yeah, definitely, they got a will serve from groundwater and sewer to hall water, uh but they, right now, they don't have any other water capacity. Just a whole water.
Yeah, and, yeah, there's a, there's other, right, things going on, but with that application, but yeah, it's in the beginning stages for sure. Um. Yeah, and just to clarify, the what the scope of work is for the consultants right now is to just focus on Spanish Valley, because that area is is where we're seeing the most growth, and there's the most potential for development. So, but all of the whole county will be included in the future land use plan eventually.
Okay.
Be kind of staged and based. So. Um, all right. Going back to the first item on our list for the priority updates would be the CUP discussion, and as you all know, there's been a lot of um kind of a history of of thinking about CUPs and um in terms of what, you know, analyzing whether or not the, we have too many of them in the in land use code, which I think is is the opinion of planning staff. Um, you could be, you know, that it's not always, it's not necessarily that this would be something to benefit staff, um. It does, they do take a lot of time to to process, and there's just sometimes there's just not a reason to look at a CUP for certain things that maybe should just be permitted, um such as recently, we did a CUP for Rim Tours Bicycle Touring Outfitter Guide, and um they were in highway commercial, which seems like a pretty, if they're not gonna be permitted elsewhere, they should be permitted in highway commercial, um so it just didn't seem like uh that should require a CUP, so things like that, but there are definitely areas or types of uses, especially high intensity uses and like industrial or mining activity, um there may be other intensity intensive uses, if we don't have the use standards already in the code to regulate them, then they could be good candidates for a CUP, so. Share my screen with the use table, I've started to kind of go through and propose some changes, um and so that maybe this would be helpful to kind of get the discussion started. And OB, I wanted to give you a chance, if you haven't, if you wanted to say anything at this point. Did you have anything you wanted to add, or should we keep moving?
Did you say me? Alyssa?
I, can you?
You weren't referring to me, were you?
I was.
No, I just didn't, I couldn't hear there very well, okay.
Um, okay, so OB did mention that in his notes to me, one of the, like, sort of as a a process kind of uh point of, I don't know, this process. Point is, we should maybe have the planning commission work on after this workshop, maybe the. Point is, we should maybe have the planning commission work on, after this workshop, maybe the planning commission could focus in on. Having refining this, the CUPs in the use table and then have been bringing their input from the commission and then. Maybe bringing that back to the commission, but ha- having a chance to go through and really. Look at each use that already requires a CUP and then figuring out if it needs to remain or not.
Some, something else I wanted to throw, throw into that, I, I think, if you go back enough years, the, you being. The reason that we have all these season use table is. We wanted like, planning commission and county commission to be able to review it and. Kind of be able to say yes or no, like some of these uses might under some circumstances be appropriate. And I think because of court cases and state will have changed, in the meantime, conditional uses are now very close to permitted ones, but. Well, we can kind of regain that original intent by you creating an overlay zone to.
Mm-hmm.
To handle conditional use, and I'm not saying that's the right solution all the time, but I. I think frequently and especially maybe for larger uses like major utilities, for example. Um, I think creating an overlay zone that requires a master plan and that kind of stuff, and then it would be a legislative decision.
Yeah, I think it's a good tool that we can implement for things like that. For sure, cuz that, that does, that does go step beyond the CUP, obviously, cuz it's a legislative. Decision process, so.
So that. Uh, with that use of overlays, would it just kind of make the most sense to eliminate conditional uses altogether?
Potentially, I mean, it, I think there's, I mean, that with the, with an overlay, the process is. You need to go to planning commission and county commission and there's two public hearings, so it's a lot more involved. A process, so I, I wouldn't wanna just say yes too quickly to that because there might be some need to still have a, a CUP where. It's that in-between stage where you might just wanna, you might wanna be able to approve it without going through public hearings, but you might wanna add. Uh, some conditions, some mitigating measures that were unanticipated or not thought of in the code itself.
Generally like. When thinking about land use authorizations, giving a jurisdiction implement. That they can use as a very wide basket at the bottom of everything else. I don't know what we should put this in, how the game of Plingo should play out. But at the end of the day, we've got some kind of permitting authority. So that the jurisdiction simply does not limit its own jurisdiction by not having a tool that it may want to use in the future. I generally like, let's not give up. The ability to have jurisdiction over, so that we may feel, the conditional use permit should. Cover all of those things that we don't see coming. You know, and we can, everything that we've thought of. Come up with an overlay zone that's appropriate for it. But retain the rights to issue CUPs for the unknown unknowns, you don't know what's gonna come down the pipeline next. You definitely don't wanna get rid of a implement or authority that you have as a, as a body, right?
I don't hope they have much authority to leave it. It seems like, uh, if somebody asks my CUP, it's incredibly difficult to turn and say no to it.
Well, what I do mean to say is that with a CUP, you could put stipulations within a permit. That becomes administrative, but the county still has, like, within this permit, term one, term two, you can have. Process, you can have liability, insurance bonding, all of those things can go in a CUP without that implement, just say we're gonna throw this out. Scratch the code.
Well, actually, the CUP section is, is regulated by the state. So, um, and what the state says is that you have to establish the standards. In your code for each one of those CUPs, which you can, I mean, it's pretty simple to do. Um, that's why they're so many, just so long, because they were so easy to set up. Some of them are vague, they look vague areas, and the main reason for a conditional is based on state law is to, um, protect. Areas around what you're asking for, um, and you can do that in many ways within the code. So it's, it's a process, it's probably a harder process because people are coming up with all sorts of ways of getting around them. But they still need, if they need the state code, we, if our code meets what the state code fires, um. And they just say establish, establish standards that, um, must meet the guidelines of each. Use and the standards are no different than development guidelines or standard imposed on permitted uses. So, you know, if you wanna set up a standard specific to, um. There are, there are ways to do this, that work, um, sometimes they're too vague. But there, and, and if you look in your Land use code and, and have it on your computer. That little section over here, if you punch that number, it tells you what that section is and what you should be putting in, you know. Do we just need to enhance that, we make it better to fit the, to the CUP? Um, the CUPs are tried and true by every county, um, you know, I think probably throughout the nation. So they're not something we probably wanna think about totally getting there though. But, I mean, like the university, I thought, when my first thought when I saw it in there as a condition use was. Why? But you know, there's gotta be reasons that somebody would not, not wanting university next to somebody's house cuz universities are loud and noisy.
Right.
Kids are no longer.
If you had. You would kinda have the ability to mitigate the impacts, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, I, I don't know that we wanna get rid of all of them, I think that we want, uh, we might wanna put more direction into.
But if we, so, if we don't have the standards that say. If you want a university, you must meet X, Y, and Z, if we don't already have those in place. Then somebody says, I want a university in my neighbor's backyard. The default is that because we've identified the possibility of a university that. The state will allow the university.
But the conditions that you wanna set for that university are set in your code, so if the university can't meet them, they can't do it.
Oh, yeah.
That's specifically all it is.
It's hard to anticipate all the conditions we might want.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, I mean.
It sounded like Tony was saying, talking earlier about the trade-offs between a. You know, C or P and the use table having something be a permitted use or conditional use, but I think for each of these, we have four options, you know, it could be not permitted. It could be per, you know, permitted and we can put the conditions, it could be a conditional use, which is actually, I think, very similar to the permit, it just gives us. This ability and, and the fourth option is we can make an overload zone, which gives us, you know, the most flexibility.
This is pretty standard run, not just in counties and commission, conditional use permits and things like that. The, the river is so under the same way, depending on what and where precisely you may need to cross or build. You either have something that's like identified and pre-approved, identified and prohibited, or. May be allowable if they can meet certain provisions, those are usually things like when. The Army Corps or the county floodplain developer or the EPA get involved. That's the maybe, but you have to meet some conditions idea, that is just a very typical like planning schema.
So I, the, the way I was approaching this was kind of tackling the low hanging fruit first, like. Where do we have conditional use permits that really just should not be there because we don't want to. They, in, in the hypothetical situation where they would come with a CUP. And we would have to approve that use even with mitigating factors. As conditions, it still wouldn't be appropriate, so those, those kinds of things, I thought, you know. I mean, daycare is not the best example, but I did think that daycare in general, general daycare, that's a large, that's a larger daycare, that's, I think. Twelve, twelve or something over twelve, yes. Multi-family residential, we might not wanna have that, but in any other zone that it could be, it could be okay. Um, so that would be something to look at for sure, but. Daycare limited, that's up to eight kids, I think, so that's permit, that's already permitted, um, across all residential zones, I think that's probably okay. We definitely need more daycare, so, but then we have the college or university. Um, in a multi-family zone or rural residential zone as a conditional use permit, that might be a little questionable. Especially in rural residential.
I would postulate that. In, in keeping things cogent, if. The use may meet every possible condition, we may stipulate for a CUP. But the county would still feel like it's not inappropriate despite having met all of those conditions. That in this matrix should just automatically be a not allowable use.
Exactly.
Right?
Yes.
You know, that's just.
Just not permitted.
Logic there.
Yeah.
Uh, we just need to decide which ones get the blank split.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because if, if you're saying, you know, they met all the conditions of the CUP, but it's still not appropriate. The question, why? Right?
Yeah.
So, that's really like.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm, I'm thinking we can get through, like, the first easier ones would be those to determine. Um, you know, what's really not appropriate, like, again, I. Another example is a recycling center in rural residential. That, that's generally more of a, a light industrial or a highway commercial use. Um, because range and grazing is out in the outlying areas, it could be considered, but definitely. I wouldn't think in rural residential, that's appropriate. Neither would be, um, a hospital, um, or a clinic. We would have designated areas for those in, um, general business or neighborhood. If it was a small clinic, neighborhood commercial, um. So those ones I've already crossed out, these are, this is just my, you know, coming from staff's perspective and. From, uh, some of the input that I've gotten so far. Some of these areas with the utilities, some, um, I, I think we would wanna definitely look into major utilities. Uh, whether or not those would be appropriate and where. The other one that was really obvious, oh, well, of course, we have their outfitter guides service and facility. Um, that had been allowed as a conditional use permit and probably shouldn't be. Um, those businesses can be big and with a lot of employees and a lot of. Impacts, I think that would be an easy one to consider, take, getting rid of. And then there's other things like a woodworking cabinet shop, I don't know why in range and grazing that. Would necessarily need a conditional use permit and, but it just be permitted. Um, especially if we have good standards, use standards to regulate that use. And, and the same for highway commercial. So I've gone through and just, I've, I've started. Some suggestions for some of these, I think that maybe the next step would be for everyone to look at this closely and provide their own feedback. The planning staff, um, unless we wanna get into each one of these right now, I think that could be. A little time consuming.
You wanna give a timeline to, like, kind of a new date?
Sure.
Helps sometimes, and then that way, people don't do it, they don't do it. So. Can you tell that's the teacher and me coming?
What were you gonna say?
Uh, I was gonna say, I liked how like the daycare was, you know, the general versus limited, kind of distinguished between different sizes. And I think a lot of these, um, start to get a little more vague. Um, I think that, you know, when we're talking about like in the airport. That could be, hey, I've got a private plane, I wanna land in my backyard and hang out at my personal thing, and or it could be. I wanna land giant jets, you know, it's a.
Yeah, that's actually an interesting one that's permitted in highway commercial.
I think it's also kind of similar with the outfitters, I think that there could be very large operations, you know, larger than Western River and what they have in the highway commercial. And then there's a lot of things where there's like one dude with a van.
Right.
And so.
Yeah.
That up.
Having some.
This, that's a broad spectrum of this.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know at what place that would make sense to, uh. Flesh some of these out.
Right, and starting to kind of have different levels of, or scales of the businesses.
The small scale. For a home business, right, that would cover.
That's true.
These really small scale.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, we have, um, outfitters that are permitted through a home occupation business license that are just, they have their. One or two like ATVs on their trailers, it's, they're parked at their home and then they go out and take people.
Yeah.
But they're just like a one or two person operation and they, they are permitted through their, through the home occupation.
Yeah, I think that, at least with the city, the definition can't have any employees, right, so once you have a single employee. Then you're, you're longer of a occupation.
Yeah, and with ours, I think we allow what, one employee. Yeah, or you can have up to three, I think, in a home business, but that's with a C and P, and then home occupation, you can have one employee.
One in regards to that discussion though, if memory serves me, is that when we give this, business licenses, we don't actually do a site visit.
We have not. We haven't, but we have started to.
We are now. Yeah, so that, you know, we really.
Yeah.
Glad you got it, but you didn't.
And, uh, you know, with your thing with like the woodworking cabinet shop, I'm just complaining that was that, but. Uh, with the range and grazing, there's a lot of that, uh. Zoning and just that's areas that we've kind of. Turned down other projects because we, because of the, the gateway to the natural area or whatever, and if somebody could have a. Cabinet shop, you know, is it like Uncle Dale's little home shop? Or is it like a giant thing with semis coming in and a sign from the highway that, you know, that's the first thing somebody's gonna see when they come down to the north? You know, and so.
Yeah, scale really matters.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah.
So you're looking for inputs for the design stance, standards and on the chart, or do you not want the designs?
I mean, um, if you, in terms of breaking out like some nuance to these different business types and sort of the scale of them, that would be great input to have. Even just for the future land use plan process, cuz I think some of that could be wrapped into that. That might be more of a comprehensive, um, process, but I, there could be some things that should just be dealt with. Immediately in terms of breaking up, you know, being more specific in, in some of these uses. That could be defined a little better and that could be, it, it, it just depends, like, you know, you never know if, if one of these changes is gonna create. Kind of a, a chain reaction of other changes that need to happen, so I think. We'd wanna just go case by case and see if it makes sense to change it right now, and it wouldn't affect anything else, then we could do that, we could consider it.
In this scenario, there, that was, sorry, was just talking about. Oh, outfitting and light industrial type uses, a very good. Indicator of the type of use that's going to be there is the size and proportion of the lot dedicated parking. Specifically for outfitters, like large outfitters that go on long trips with large groups of people. Bring in thirty people for a trip and park twenty cars in their lot. Um, both small business, uh. Hell cunning service, a mountain bike shuttle, may park two vehicles for their entire day. Um, the same with light industrial and cabinet shops. Mega Blue, for, for example, you know, take your pick, um, the volume of freight. And the volume of that lot size dedicated to parking is gonna indicate volume of product being moved for, but it's just like, it's a very good. When you're looking at, like, how do I scope the size of this business? Big lot for parking is like, be a good pulse.
That's true, and then also I was thinking like square footage of the building.
Yeah.
To, if they're having.
Yeah.
You know, it's a. Smaller operation.
Yeah, it depends, it depends on the type of operation, you know, um.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm thinking about hatch expeditions in Arizona, maybe does, you know, fifteen trips a year and they have a boathouse that would dwarf anything here. Right, so it, it's just like, that feels like boats are bigger.
Right. Yeah. Well, I, I think this is a great conversation and we can keep thinking about breaking up these uses a little bit more and specifying. You know, defining them based on scale, um, it's just a matter.
Just a, ju- uh, just a quick comment, which is, I like, we've tried this before, I think, uh. Uh, Kevin was on the planning commission when we kind of started through with Zachariah being. Planning director, going through and saying, you know, what conditional uses should we get rid of, and it was at the time. Hey, these conditional uses, you can't get all the conditions down right, we ought to get rid of as many. We ought to get rid of as many as we could. But we never got very far because I think some of them were these kind of nuances that people are talking about, I think one thing. We could do is we could probably cherry pick at least some. That are pretty clear, should or shouldn't be conditional uses. Um, and get them in front of us so we can make at least some changes and there are other ones. That we just might shake our heads and say we aren't quite sure of yet, so just just a thought that might get us off the ground.
I'm a little bit of history of some of these condition uses when you're talking about them, I'm trying to remember. Um, when this first code was written, this was a playback in nineteen ninety nine. We didn't have this many districts to begin with, it was like three commercial districts and three residential districts. Um, so what happened is we would have to put, there were things that were going on in the valley, especially because. The zoning in the valley was highly commercial, but it was essentially light industrial, it's where all light industrial people were. Um, so in order, and it happened in a couple of times of replacing the code. Conditions that were set up as conditionally used were because there were already something, there was already something out there. That was permitted.
Right.
So to not allow it again, it was put in as a conditional use, but that was at the time when conditional uses were legislative. Process processes and the council to get them approved. Um, so there, that's part of why there's some of these.
Yeah.
And now that they're not there anymore, one that hit me was when you talked about the uh. Uh, dump that out there, there. That was a permitted playback of this highway commercial. It is no longer that highway commercial zoning, and there was nothing else out there. You know, we don't want another one out there because it's allowed, was permitted you, so you put conditional access that has to go further.
Right, right.
And that's.
Yeah.
It's why we had to have so many weird conditional uses, when I was going through my, I'm not still there.
Yeah, there's always a reason, there's always a history of these decisions, so it's good to have you there, Mary, to remind us. Um. Okay, so back to the list, I I think. So far, we've gotten some some input on the C U Ps and I will continue to take your feedback if you wanna send me emails. Or a phone call, um, if there's something you feel strongly about or you have experience with, let's let's talk about it. Uh, does anybody help have anything else to add on that topic until or we're gonna move on and? Kevin, how are you?
Soon.
Do you have anything?
On the use table?
Um, for yeah, for the C U Ps specifically.
Um, I mean, I I I do think we should think seriously about overlay zones for a lot of.
For some of those, yeah, for like the major utilities.
Yeah.
How far are we into the hundred and eighty days?
Uh, I think we're about halfway.
We have a short amount of time.
Yeah.
To do something quickly, right?
That's true.
Yeah.
Yes.
Actually, that that was a mark I was gonna make once it hit three o'clock, which is, you know, we are well into the hundred and eighty. And maybe the remainder of the meeting could just be focusing on things that.
Mm hmm.
That we think might be important to have happen before that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, put those first in the agenda.
Yeah, for sure. Um, so one of the things that I think. You may agree, Kevin, but one of those high priority things would be to uh. Consider reducing the residential density in highway commercial, right now it's eighteen dwelling units per acre. And we've thought for a long time that that is inappropriate for a commercial zone to have. Uh, a multifamily res- it's basically multifamily residential. We're working to designate new multifamily residential areas in the county based on the future land use plan, so that. And and those will be in places that actually have already residential zoning where you should have. Residential development instead of, you know, houses and and people being forced. The dense, the higher density housing types being forced to live along the highway corridor, I just don't think that that's necessarily the best planning. Um, so that that is something we've talked about, either taking that out completely and not allowing. Uh, any residential development, except maybe for the, we have our accessory employee housing, which allows five R V sites. For employees of the commercial use. Um, or just maybe even a compromise would be to have. To allow five dwelling units per acre, which is what we allow in other commercial districts, a general business allows five dwelling units per acre. So I kind of open it up for input on that one right now. Buddy has any thoughts? Agree or disagree?
I've got some thoughts, I I don't agree with it to start with, I mean, there's not a community from Grand Junction all over this country that we don't have. People living in zones like that, so what you're do- doing is restricting housing further here. So at at a time when. Completely across this state, we're supposed to be increasing places for housing. If we're gonna decrease here, where are we gonna increase? Because when you reduce this one, that means then if it's eighteen somewhere else, we need to be. Moving it up thirty six or something, right? I mean, this is a mandate that came down from the governor. We had Mister Walgriff here, and I don't remember anybody ever saying that you should be going around reducing. Housing, so if we're gonna reduce it in this zone, where are you gonna increase it?
Well, and that's what the, what we have our, we have four different um, multifamily. Higher density zoning districts that we would be introducing as part of the future Randy's plan. And out of that process, once that gets adopted in the general plan, then it would create the need for land use code updates where you would actually. Um, establish those zones as new zones. And then you can go and somebody can apply for a rezone to that higher density zoning district and. There you have it, that's where you would have designated higher density housing.
Oh, yeah, so I, I mean, I agree with what you said about um, it being a good idea to to reduce the dare and. And and there are other other places, but an- another important difference that you haven't mentioned. Is when it's a zone that we can opt into, like the proposed new zones, that allows us to require that a certain percentage be workforce housing. Whereas currently the highway commercial, you know, people can build. You know, it's it's unrestricted housing, and I I think one thing we've learned in the last few years, and you know, we shouldn't just give high density away, we should. You know, make it be part of a deal where we also get to require workforce housing, so that a big. Gap, you know, sort of a loophole right now is the highway commercial, so I think that's. Ev- even if we did eventually wanna allow hu- housing in the highway zone, I think it should be as. As part of some kind of opt-in, you know, overlay zone or something people then. Yeah, density bonus of it, you can come with strings attached.
Do we have any, anyone top of the bed, the bill, eighteen units?
I mean, other than King Creek, there, we haven't had a lot of housing, um. Not hardly, I don't think any, how, I think if anything that has been proposed.
Flintstone Arch thing.
I know. Yeah. It's been that historically, there's been the overnight accommodations that were that were built in that. Along the corridor, but yeah, they're not for housing, um.
I'm not in love with uh. Any restrictions on housing out there, I I. My housing was cheap in St. George, uh, because I was on the freeway, I mean, that's why we paid so much less for housing. Everyone knew it, you got a better house, you got off the freeway, but it wasn't it. I was thankful for the house at that time.
Right.
Uh, I didn't care that it was on the freeway, it was house.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I could only see that being the benefit. To many in our community, any more housing being built, I mean, be in the eighteen count versus the five count.
I gotta notice that the majority of our A D O applications that have come in have come in in highway commercial lots.
Yeah.
Well, and that was.
Takes me a pitching.
That was due to. Yeah, there there, that was also due to the restrictions or the criteria for approving them, which they had to be on a major. Collector or a minor collector, but. And basically, no A D Os could be allowed in rural residential, I think, so that was just all off limits, whereas. With the future land use plan and thinking about higher densities we have, um. We would have three different sizes, uh, minimum lot sizes, all the way going down to five thousand acre or five thousand square feet lots. Um, that's about, I think it's eight units per acre equivalent, and then um, going up to our. You know, ten thousand square foot lots. And then a half acre lot, which we already have that zoning. Um, but then the the multifamily zones would be eighteen units per acre, thirty five units and up to forty five units. Per acre, so you would see, these would all be um, offered as density bonuses, rezones and. If I don't have the draft future land use map on hand for these future land use designations, but they're. Placed in areas strategically throughout Spanish Valley. Um, kind of along some of our more uh, trafficked corridors like Spanish Trail Road and Will Creek. Uh, especially along Spanish Valley Drive, going all the way down to the county line. So there's some areas that would be making up for the reducing eighteen units per acre in highway commercial. We would rep- we would have alternatively these areas designated in residential zones for higher density.
Do we know what the actual like numbers trade off would be, like is that consultants?
That's a process that I've been wanting to.
I think we wanna see the numbers, I need that, you know, I think, you know. In order to build housing stock for the folks that live and work here, um, that's important and to be able to. Have through an administrative process with these new proposed zones that say, you know, here's your density bonus. I think that's great, I think the devil's the details of like, what is actual trade off?
Right.
Take an R eighteen, you know, what, how many additional.
Yeah.
Units could the highway commercial designation as it is currently, how many would, you know, what's the trade off there?
We've already done or done the build out, we will study for the current existing zoning, so we we know what the numbers are based on our current zoning. But when we get down to the final version of the future land use map and what the densities would be. Then we would wanna do a build out study on that and can be able to compare the numbers.
Out of curiosity with that build out study, do you know how kind of nuanced the consultant gets? Cause right, you it might look like one thing on paper, but is that lot even really developable in terms of?
Right.
Lots of utilities, like it, do they get to that level, cause we could say, well, there's all this potential, but you know, reality might say something different than.
Right. That, I mean.
That's incredibly detailed.
It is, I don't know yet how that would, how that would pan out, but um, I think that's something we should talk about. More in designing what that should look like. Yeah.
Question.
Yes.
So how, like, I saw in the upper story residential, I mean, kinda like upper story residential is kinda, you don't lose your commercial and you retain.
Mm hmm.
Affordable house or more affordable housing, it's kinda, you know, um. But I didn't see use standards on that in that line, and then I was also wondering would the restriction. Kinda affect that or you, like what you're saying is downsizing that, well, does that affect upper story residential? I just, cause it didn't have a a use.
Well, the the upper s- upper story or yeah, upper story residential would be limited based on, it would be limited based on the same. As a regular residential on the ground i- in terms of units per acre.
Uh huh, so when you decrease the eighteen to five, would that affect your upper story residential? Cause I'm kinda like, oh man, if he can kinda keep the up, like, we're trying not to kill our commercial space.
So maybe as a trade off to.
Yeah.
Al- allow only upper story in highway commercial. Where that's actually one of the requirements currently in our code for neighborhood commercial, which I would like to change because. It's not for various reasons, it would work better to have, to be able to allow a residence on. A parcel with a business, but not necessarily stacked in for some zones. But for highway commercial, I could see it maybe being a good candidate for like that traditional mixed use where you have your. Your commercial on the ground level and you're allowing some some like apartment type. Housing up up on this upper story.
Yeah. Or another idea, I mean, some of the lots along the highway are pretty deep, and so you could have residential, you know. Not based, you know, at the back of the lot and more surely would be reserved in the front.
A lot of them have that already actually out there.
Hmm, yeah, that's a good compromise for sure as well, yeah.
That.
This, and I think combining that with the fact with, you know, what, whenever we give away high density is is part of a density one, this sort of overlays on. That's, I guess what I would be in favor of, I, you know, I think we can show flexibility like Aaron was talking about, getting housing there, but again, I. If we're gonna have larger housing projects, I'm gonna make sure that a certain percentage of workforce housing.
Yeah, or at least primary residency, yeah.
So right now, the split zoning with like a single lot has different zoning still exists.
Mm hmm.
Is is this hoping to rectify?
Mm hmm, yeah, some of that, yeah, for sure, we would wanna try to, I mean, there. So it's kind of hard and a lot of those lots on the the highway one ninety one corridor are very deep. And they're not subdivided yet, so they're still, it's difficult to not split zone in some cases, because you don't necessarily want. The highway commercial of zone like that to go all the way to the back where it abuts next to the residential zone, so. It is a little tricky, but we've been trying to as much as possible rectify that in the future land use plan.
Yeah.
But I think for large lots, a split zone is totally fine.
Yeah.
The reason you just said.
Right. So anyway, so that kinda gives you the idea of where we're going with the um. Density bonus, new multifamily or higher density zones that we can can start to implement. Um, after the future land use plan is adopted. Um. So what I'm hearing in terms of the highway commercial changes there, that uh. On one hand, we might want to. Preserve some of that housing o- opportunity for housing in highway commercial, but maybe. Um, restrict it to either upper story or the back of the lot in some cases, um, or. Do away with it completely, come back and and offer higher density housing there as a density bonus?
Yeah, I guess I was suggesting both of those.
Okay, right.
Or I think you've also heard leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
I mean, that's also a voice here.
Yes, for sure. Okay.
And not to piggyback off of of both these guys, but uh. Not to force anyone in- into dealing with their zoning, uh, or accepting a a future zoning decision. Uh, but to incentivize them with that, with a game.
Hmm.
Uh, or again, somewhere else be like.
Right.
I, I mean, that's opening that conversation through would would benefit us all.
Yeah.
Uh, to be like, obviously, you know. I, in ne- in no way do I wanna downgrade anyone's current zoning, uh. Leave a land rice alone, my view on that, but uh. Uh, to incentivize them to, hey, you know, the rear of your lot, you can put thirty homes instead of the current lot, I hope. Do like that idea.
Use the incentive.
Yeah, you said it.
Yep.
As.
That's always.
As density bonuses, it's an incentive.
Yeah, I almost wonder if we have that split, like the upper story but back of the lot, right, like.
But.
It's almost, and, you know, it's like, we we keep that front commercial, but we. I I don't know, instead of just having an upper story, is it like upper story back, then your s- your split z- your split zoning also accommodates that. I don't know, they just see that as kind of a, maybe some kind of compromise with. I just view it as like our commercials, so I mean, I hear it will say, but I'm like, also think that our commercial stuff is so. Valuable too, well, so, you know, I don't know if there's any like carve out for that or something.
Yeah, I mean, the the economics are interesting because I think that the value is. The value of land in highway commercial is based on the commercial.
Right.
Potential, and so I think that's probably why we're not seeing as much housing development in highway commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we we did have an application come a couple of years ago where where they wanted to do the split level. They wanted to extend the, if I'm remembering this correctly, they wanted to extend the commercial further back.
Mm hmm.
But then put residential on top of the whole building.
Mm hmm.
But then there was like no buffer zone to the neighborhood below and it was kind of that holy of zone, so the. Commercial was already high and kind of looking down at the residential, that lack of buffer. At the hearing, there was a lot of pushback from residents on the other side of the fence.
Mm hmm.
And it was, if you were just looking at the. The request from the commercial owners, it made a lot of sense and it seemed to kind of check a lot of the boxes of what we were hoping to have with.
Right.
More commercial zoning, more hell, and it was like. Uh, but it ended up not getting through, so it's uh, it just kind of highlights the. The conundrum involved, but I don't really have good answers for it, so I would like to kind of.
But I don't really have good answers for it, so I would like to kind of see some more.
Is any of this meeting the need that um the development with Cooper was trying to do? Is that what we're trying to?
Yeah, so the future land use plan currently has a de- uh proposed M F R. Forty-five units per acre, which is what Cooper was going to try to.
That's what he was asking for.
And um essentially, that process was being. It is happening through the future land use plan, and then it would be implemented in the land use code, and then Cooper would be allowed to apply for that. We had started to. We we tried to fast track that process um back when he was up against a deadline for the light tech application, but then. He ended up backing out of that, so we. We just went back to our normal timeline. Our planned timeline. But yeah, I mean, this is our, we're working with is our current zoning along the highway here where we have highway commercial. Right up against um rural residential and large lot residential, which. Does create some conflicts, so. The future land use plan tries to address some of that by creating buffer areas between. Highway commercial and residential districts and proposing um either higher density multifamily or neighborhood commercial. Areas and kind of breaking that up a little bit. But it is definitely a, it's it's causing, it causes a lot of tension with. Those two uses being right next to each other. Um, okay. We can always go off on tangents, can't we? So let's see, the. The next one on the list I have is. Skip the, we talked about commercial zoning already. Um range and grazing, do we want to get into that and talk about the reducing the minimum lot size out there? This would be. A change in article five, if we wanted to do kind of a quick fix, it would just be going in and changing the lot design standards. Um for minimum lot size and density for ranging grazing. Um to create. Uh be more appropriate for areas and outline outline parts of the county. Um. The future land use plan also does address this, so I we we currently have um a proposal for. Country residential, which would take over the. Uh five minimum, five acre minimum lot size that we currently have, and that would. So there would still be a a zone for what we what we currently have is ranging grazing is five acre minimum lots. Um but this country residential would be more like. Designating where ranging grazing and that size of lots should should still remain in the county, like you were talking about that, I think, in one of your. Uh in one of your emails and. Then in other outlining areas where we have um large tracts of land that are, you know, in the hundreds. Even thousands of acres of size. Uh traditionally and more common in in counties, you have a minimum lot size of twenty acres or even forty acres in some cases. Um so the this this has already been proposed in the future land use plan. To align better with um. You know, basic likes. Urban service areas and um levels of service so that we're we're not creating the. Potential for. Little five acre lot subdivisions out way out in the county that might be problematic. So, but as I said, the quick change would just, if we wanted to address something quickly in. Terms of of this land use code amendment process, it would just be to. Change the lot design standards in article five. To go from five acres to twenty. And then um. As part of the future land use plan, that would address some of these other, you know, creation of. The country residential to preserve the five acre minimum lot size in some places and then. Um. Possibly have a a forty acre minimum lot size somewhere.
So is this a problem somewhere, or are we just? Trying to get ahead of the problem?
Trying to get ahead of a problem. It is, it was, I believe it was a mistake that the that ranging grazing was just minimum lot size, five acres all over the. Rest of the county was kind of just a a blanket, uh easy solution, I guess, and it wasn't. Thought about in terms of. Like your levels of service and and where you have your. Your, you know, growth boundary and and um emergency services and water and all of that, I mean. In a lot of counties all over, you would never have five acre minimum lot size. In those outlying areas where you have five hundred acre parcels and thousand acre parcels, they should be. Sized appropriately. No fire service, it was that, right? Yeah.
So the folks who live maybe on about like. Thirty-five hundred square feet on a five acre lot do expect a certain level of service, whereas the folks who live out in Fisher Valley. Don't give a dang about the level of service, you know?
Yeah, and and I do think that you should still be able to have a few dwellings per parcel out there, like it shouldn't just be. One dwelling unit per forty acres, that would be ridiculous, you know, but maybe thinking about. Um three to five dwelling units per parcel. Um. I know we have a proposal right now for. Uh putting a couple of units, a couple of dwelling units out on. I said like five hundred acres. Um and that's. Let's do it, that's fine, they're gonna have their own spring and or well, and it's a working ranch, so. It makes sense to have some places for the for the ranchers and the, you know, yeah, home base, so.
Yeah, I I like the direction that you're doing it, you know, the the. The five, twenty and forty. I think that makes sense, um. I do think this is something would be good to try to get done before the near the eighty fifth, and so that that just means using the. At least as an annual measure, this article five approach, it can be refined after.
Right. Okay.
I think it's acceptable if you add what you just stated there, that it's more than one unit per forty acres if it.
Right.
Again, here we're just adding restrictions, and if there's an actual need to do so. Then I'm in agreement with it, but if it's just to add restrictions, it's not helping anything.
We we don't want to do that for sure. Yes, I agree completely. There's good reasons.
And I think, if you look at other counties, similarly Grand County, like in western Colorado. In mountainous parts of Utah, they they tend to have it. Minimum lot sizes of at least twenty acres, so I I think Grand County is really an outlier, and we would just be kind of coming. In line with what lots of other counties have decided is appropriate.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of the larger lots out there are. There are some, there is a handful of private properties out there that are large tracts. Yeah. But a lot of them are, I mean, there are some that are active ranching, grazing lands, so. Yeah. Okay, so. We will, we will look at at this as a a a positive thing to keep on the list and making sure that we, you know. Allow all the the potential for dwelling units and. That. So on to the next one, water source protection overlay, so this was brought up um by the planning commission. Currently, the. Code states that. It's like this and. Phrase where both the the water protection. Source identified through the EPA, and then also it has to be, it has to meet the D E Qs. Um water source protection district. Both of those conditions have to be in place in order for stricter standards for development to be required. And that would mean that only the um aquifer protection area in up above Moab is. Is the only one that would apply, um and it would exclude the areas out around Castle Valley. And I don't know if there was an intention to to do that, or if it was just an oversight, but it it. It is a concern for folks out in that area that they would like to have the protection of their aquifer. Um so in tweaking the language just slightly, we could um. Have some separate standards for development within uh the Castle Valley EPA sole sole source aquifer. Um currently, the code, the the. W S P O is an overlay, it requires a conditional use permit for development in that zone, so right now we have that. Application in process for the big development out near Steel Bender, the golf course. And that's in the W S P O, so they've had to go through a conditional use permit process to um. Allow development there. And it just, it's a good thing because it it creates um conditions for that. For the construction and the installation of of their uh infrastructure that. Um have a little bit stricter, you know, guidelines and standards to protect the water.
Can we see the rest of your map there to the upper end of Castle Valley?
So this is the only, this is the only, it doesn't go beyond this in in terms of the the snapshot that I got. Um you can go on to the their website and see all of it.
Who's website?
This is the EPA uh sole source, sole source aquifer website. And you can just type in. I think it's just, it's this quick Google, you can find this fairly easily, this map.
Just recall about a year ago where Castle Valley was trying to put some kind of an overlay or something on that stretched. All the way to the Dolores River, all the way around the backside of the La Salles to protect their aquifer or their water, which I think. And I more than think I know would be a huge overreach, and their aquifer that within that valley, I would understand. But if they're trying to reach outside their own aquifer, I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, and and you know, obviously with Castle Valley. Within the city boundaries that we wouldn't, we don't have any jurisdiction with it in there anyway, so we wouldn't be reviewing any development or C U Ps, but. This would be for all of the outside areas around the cast, the city of Castle Valley. Um. And it would essentially be requiring development to go through a conditional use permit, and I think it would be. Wise to probably delineate whether that's a a large subdivision or just somebody just trying to build a home. I don't think that you would. And yeah, I did see that, thank you. Obi, did you want to expand on this one?
Uh, yeah, I probably, I probably originally brought it up, but I want to be very careful. It is just a change of word from and and or, but it's actually an important change, so uh. Basically. We, as a water committee out in Castle Valley, we're looking at what protections do the B L M give us, what protections do? Um the Forest Service give us, what do protections do the county give us? And of course, we uh looked at this W S P O, this water source protection overlay. And basically, it doesn't do anything for Castle Valley, and why? Because we are a water provider, that is, people. Uh drill wells into our uh aquifer uh in the town of Castle Valley. But we are the water supplier because we don't send the water to them through a um. Uh pipes and stuff, right? Uh so there was kind of no protection. Um. We're a sole source aquifer. Uh. Uh Moab area, Spanish Valley ha- is a sole source aquifer, according to the EPA, they get their drinking water. Basically, from their aquifer, we get ours from the Castle Valley aquifer. Uh and there's actually only three sole source aquifers in uh Utah. So uh the, we get pretty good protection and and also uh. Uh Moab gets pretty good protection, that area of ca- uh the county uh from the Forest Service. And from B L M, B L M says no surface occupancy. Uh in the watershed for Castle Valley, so you can't do oil and gas. Uh there, you can't do uh major soil disturbances there in the entire aquifer, so this. Is in some senses a real. Change, much of the property in Castle Valley is basically uh. B L M and the Forest Service, and they provide pretty good protections. Uh the county, not so much, um. I won't go terribly far into the ar- argument, the um in. Salt Lake uh city watersheds are rather well protected, uh you know, Little Dell Canyon, Lamb's Canyon. Uh uh little and big Cottonwood Canyons, they have pretty good protections, and we don't. Have very much protection, both for Castle Valley and for the Moab side of our watersheds, the state. Says, well, you know, where you got your big wells over in the Moab area. Because they're a water supplier, they pipe water to your house, uh we're going to put some acres away. But they're really kind of in the area. Of uh the big wells and stuff that are uh up on that side, so this is a. Real change, uh there are private property owners that would be involved in this. And what the change would be is that the W S P O. Would be in place for these two watersheds, so. Uh. It is, it is, it is a, it is a change of a word. And or or, but it's a reasonably big change.
And I just wanted to point out too that, so currently, if you see on this map, this area down here is what. Um the D E Q delineates as a groundwater protection overlay, and that is. Currently, in our code, it currently is required for this entire area, any development that goes in here. Would does, has to go through a C U P process, so that's already there. But what's not included in the D E Q's map is the area around Castle Valley, and so the code. Would essentially just require, it would add this area as a as a another protection area for the W S P O. Um but it wouldn't really, I don't think we would need to be changing anything or expanding. The um. This boundary for the Moab watershed.
So are you pointing to blue and yellow or just?
That whole, all of the, all of the different colors are are part of the, they're different levels of protection, I I don't really understand what those are. But um. In another version of this map, they're all the same color, I think it's. I don't know, maybe Trish knows.
I don't know. But this was brought up years ago by John Viles, who works with a lot of water service providers, he was surprised that there wasn't these protections. And I initiated, I knew nothing about it, so I was working with county attorney at the time. And it and it just got waylaid because, you know, that county attorney moved on, we got a new one. Kind of sat there, and and so this has been a process that's been really in the years. Years in the making, so it'd be great to just put this to bed, he 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 felt that this. This protection is absolutely needed.
Can we get Bob in Castle Valley more at the center of the screen? I think they all know that Upper Courthouse Wash is there, but it's.
Um. You know, this isn't, I don't, I'm not have, this is just a screenshot, so I don't have the actual inner hour map open.
Could you go back to the other map briefly? Okay. So this, this doesn't overlap. Parts of Spanish Valley or which were a lot of development.
Um, there's some areas like the, this is where the golf course is.
But but not downtown Moab, not the other side of it.
No.
Yeah, I I think this makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, and like I said, I would just want to be careful to ensure that we're not. We're not making it difficult for somebody to build a home on their lot, but that it would be more in in terms of like. A big subdivision going in or some kind of commercial operation, um. And that you can look at the language in the W S P O, it's, you know, it talks about, you know, making sure that we're. Um protecting the groundwater from contamination of. Various things that, you know, can can infiltrate. Um sewer obviously is a big one, septic systems. Um. And then stormwater runoff. So there's some pretty specific standards for development within the W S P O, it doesn't. Mean you can't develop there.
That's what, yeah, I was gonna ask, is it, is it a hard lock on, you can't develop there? Or is it, we recommend this type of pipe versus this type of pipe?
That's exactly what it is.
Waste water, right?
Yeah, it's just a higher level of of review and more mitigation measures that they would need to put in place. For the development to happen, yep.
Sure.
Yes. Um, okay, the next one we have on the list is the um floodplains, section six point eight. So this really came to light with the recent um King Creek development and reviewing the uh. How we treat development in the floodplain, so this, and this is a lot of. I would have to say a lot of the knowledge that that we implement or that we use is from our floodplain administrator, Bill Hulse. So he is the one who has said many times that this ordinance that was in place in twenty nineteen that was adopted. Um essentially is what he uses and that the county has been using or implementing. In order to regulate development in the floodplain and not so much implementing the the land use code language in six point eight. Um, I know you mentioned that that there could be some discrepancy in how.
Yeah, like I mean, section D of the ordinance that you just referred to, five ninety eight says however. I mean, this ordinance is not intended to repeal, abrogate or impair in the existing ordinance, blah blah blah. And if there's another ordinance, then the stricter one applies, so.
Right.
I I know Bill thinks it's superseded, but the way it's written, it's seems to be going out of his way to say it does not supersede.
Right.
Other things.
And so this might be something that we would just, that I would say for the commission to. Um create a, come to consensus on and have a policy that is very clear for staff. Whether we're implementing six point eight language. And that's the the rule of the land for what development in the floodplain. Or if we are going with the ordinance or if we need to bring those into some kind of, or we need to update section six point eight. Um, and somehow find a compromise there. But it is, there's definitely a discrepancy and I think the practice has been. From the floodplain administrator's perspective, um that six point eight is irrelevant. But that might not be what you wanna see.
This is not, not the way the law. So, I mean, we we might wanna make a change so that the review match up with current practice.
Right, and I don't have the the details on what the changes should be for this section six point eight. Um, but that would be something to, I don't know if we wanna keep this on the list right now or if we wanna have this as more of a future con- consideration. And work out.
I think it's about to get on the list.
Try to get it done.
So, yeah, I think.
But I, it's not something that has to happen before the hundred and eighty days runs out.
So one of Bill's concerns, there's different problems with this.
Well, he, well, they they can, they contradict each other. The language in section six point eight and the new ordinance from twenty nineteen, which is still five years old. Um actually contradict each other, so.
But is it a contradiction? It's just that one's stricter than the other?
I think one is definitely stricter, I think that the, our land use code is stricter, right?
And then the other one says, there might be other things that are more strict and that case follow those side. To me, it's written such a way to avoid the contradiction.
Right, and so I guess I would wanna just make sure if we want to implement the land use code that way. Or you're interpreting the the ordinance that way, that we are all good with what this, the language in six point eight is currently. And that there's no need to bring it up to some different standards or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, I'm fine if we wanna look at six eight again, but but I just wouldn't. The way this was framed earlier is like, oh, it's obsolete, we passed five ninety eight, we just forgot to.
That's how I've been kind of.
But I think, I think the opposite is true, five ninety eight was passed, it was written such a way that it wasn't meant to. Prevent any other laws, which might be stripped.
Okay, so we'll, we'll dig into the language in six point eight and get a better idea of what would need to be changed, if anything. And um have that discussion more with the floodplain administrator.
Just gonna add that it didn't get very far during the legislative session. But there is bill floating around the state house that says, every county and municipality shall, if they don't already have one. Go about getting the floodplain development ordinance or land use code edition, they're they're mandating us, the state cares very much about it. And burn ourselves a pat on the head if we have a good one ahead of the curve. I don't know, that's just a priority, not all the county has this chapter in their code and it's an important one. It it soon, someday may be mandated that we haven't. I don't know what that means. Oh, um, no, I don't believe that it needs to have anything to do with FEMA, just that there's a floodplain development. Chapter in their land use code that they have someone who's designated as.
And our new associate planner Bryce is, are you fully certified now or is that? So she will be a floodplain administrator coming very soon, so that'll be helpful.
You know, some- something else we, right now, if you read through the land use code, you don't come across this ordinance five ninety eight. Um, it's true, so that, yeah, at at minimum, yeah, the land use code.
Yes.
Both some of the same provisions in the cases where it's requiring things of.
Yeah, that was one of Bill's comments was, at least, at the very least, that we should just take, he wants to just take out all the language and just refer to the county ordinance, five ninety eight. That would be his um ideal scenario, so I don't know, that would be something to.
The knowing the flavor of state advised against taking out something that we already have. You know, back to CUP thing. Keeping as much authority in the jurisdiction as as we can.
And it still gives Bill all that, or the the. The person that's in charge of the floodplain, that they get, they're in charge of it, he's at the coast, not taking that away from him. So they have that ability.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think there's some back and forth in between like whether Bill would. Recognize the land use code as a floodplain administrator, I think where you're coming from, Mary is, he wouldn't be. As a floodplain, that that's what he said to me before too, is he doesn't, as a floodplain administrator, is not beholden to a land use code.
Yeah.
So it is, it's.
But the coach just says that, you know, land use code tells you that they are the one in charge.
Right.
It's gonna, there was a similar situation with building inspection where they just wanted to enforce the building code and if there are additional things in land use code, like setbacks or something. And.
A lot of the site finds and conditional uses that are in the land use code are specific to the building code. So, yeah, they they do compromise.
Sometimes they align, sometimes they don't, yeah.
But, right, I think it makes sense.
Okay, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that one. Um, the other one we had on this list was looking at the multiple sections in the code pertaining to trail easements for new development. So this, there's a section in the minor subdivision, there's some language in there that talks about. Trail easements, there's also somewhere else in the code, it's just very disjointed. It really should just be in one place and it should um be something that we consider. Looking at for new development, not just um subdivisions, but any new development. If there's a an established trail going through the property, the conversation should be had with the property owner, the developer to. Um potentially, uh you know, see if there, there would be a possibility for an easement. And obviously, it's, it's something we wanna, we just need to clean it up, it's very, it's disjointed and it's not clear and it's been confusing to staff. Like, are we requiring this, are we not, you know, what for certain types of development or not, so. Um, and that's been an ongoing discussion with the non-motorized trails master plan update as well, kind of aligning with that, so.
I don't think we ever wanna dictate that it has to happen. I know many people that buy a piece of land that people have been walking through, it doesn't. And why are they obligated to continue to allow that when they. Decide to do something with that land, shouldn't we work with them for it? If it's a benefit to the public, yes.
I think the, the, one of the concerns have been, has been historically, we live in this valley where we have public lands surrounding the valley, right? And there's all these public trail systems out there, but to get out to those, sometimes you have, like in order to not have to drive all the way out. And around the private property, we have these little trails that have historically been established that go across private property. A lot of times there, it's, property owners are okay with it, sometimes they might not even know that the trail has been established. So it's a conversation that needs to be had, but it's basically for preservation of the trail connections out into the public lands, which. Is, I think, important. Yeah, and it might, it might be the case, I mean, it, but it's something worth.
I think it's worth, worth fleshing out, I mean, Hell's Revenge goes across Lions Back Resort. And it's completely at their prerogative to keep a national trail open. There, you know, any day they could just say, oh, never mind, we're gonna close Hell's Revenge, it's gonna be one way and now. So winning place stance for the county to be on this issue would be to act as a carrot or a bridge. Between public land users and private landowners. And it really, I would say strongly incentivize the creation of easements, identify where they are necessary early. Let landowners know that we wouldn't like them to come to the table and figure out a way. Because if the county is removed as a parter between these two interest groups. We get involved with things like the doctrine of adverse possession, it's ugly, there is disquiet in the community, there's like. We fill the gap or watch it burn kind of thing that happens with these easements. And that's where the county's position to negotiate and act as a leader is, it's like, hey, no, we can. You know, incentivize the creation of easements, make sure that landowners are well. Opused for lack of other words.
Oh, it's a good one though.
Yeah, it's a win-win when you do it right.
Right.
But if you, you know, drop the ball and let those two interests interact direct, that's ugly.
Right.
You know, that's the Weaver River, that'd be our whole, so we don't want that.
Yeah.
I I guess I would frame it a little bit differently, I mean, we already require quite a few easements in the event of a subdivision, like utility easements. Uh, you know, road easements thirty three feet from the center line. And and these are just not option, if you wanna subdivide, then that's an opportunity for the county to require. A bunch of easements and other things, including, you know, stubbed out roads to the adjacent property if it later develops. I mean, that's something you see on on flats as well. I think this is that same category, you know, we have a future vision for trails, some of these maybe aren't being used, I mean, they don't exist on the ground yet. But the same way that we require roadies since we're driving, we require the, you know, path evens for walking, so.
Doesn't the um, no departments, but don't they require that too?
I don't think so, not for trade, for non-motorized. In the like, construction standards or something?
In the construction standards, the road, we used to have in our, used to be by our, but I don't know, they still keep.
I'll look in there and see.
But there is something in that, I know somewhere, either in winter or um, in the construction standards for the road department. There's a statement in there that historical easements were kept open. And then provided or moved, but they have to provide something.
Right.
And I don't know if it's in the subdivision section or the constructor status, there's something there. The construction standards definitely need to be forbidden, they're, they're really.
But another very common thing is just requiring that an easement be granted for.
If it's been something that they've been using, not just on their property.
Access easements.
Access.
So anyway, I I I think that we, the way the county goes written, currently, the the trail, the trail easements are treated on the same ground. I think what would be interesting to know, like if we just came and demanded an easement and it's not subdividing, that would be a.
Overreach.
Yes, we 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 can't do that, but in in the, and I just don't know exact, you know, does the trail have to be planned already? Is the land department looking into those legal questions or should we get the?
We can.
Baseline and legal doctrine is that there's open and notorious cease for ten years. By open and notorious, it means that, like, it's on all trails. You know, you read about it in the newspaper, you know, those kinds of things, and that it hasn't been posted, that the landowner hasn't. That's why you see a lot of times, once every three hundred and sixty five days, a posted sign goes up for ten days. That negates open and notorious cease for ten years.
But this, this is a separate process from that, I mean, that, that's for trails that exist and.
I was, I was just suggesting that if like, if it fits that standard and there's zoning change or a subdivision or something like that, that could be a good threshold. For the county to use to require an easement or not. Like, well, it's meeting that standard anyway, let's put that from a prescribed easement to a real.
We, I think another example is a Spanish Valley pathway, when we have a new development along Spanish Valley, we require them to build the bike. Path, you know, pathway, that's, you know, for for people whose houses already exist and they're not subdividing. And there's this long negotiation process, you know, they get their permission, if someone's subdividing, you know, they can't subdivide unless they grant the easement.
And getting grant easement for the actual building of it, if it's in the impact fee schedule, then they don't have to build it.
We have required it in the past and that it has been only a couple of times, a Royal Crossing did it, they built their section. And I think a couple minor subdivision, maybe at least one minor subdivision did.
Did the county university, it's an impact fee. You're paying an impact fee and everybody pays that impact fee and it's on their schedule, this way it was set up by state.
Then we need to look at that, I'm sure, yeah, I remember it was one of the first minor subdivisions when I first came on and I. Wasn't really calling the shots at that time, but I remember it was interesting. Okay. Um, but I don't think that was the section that was in the, that's the reason.
It's innovation, or incentivizing is one hundred percent uh the best path to go. Uh, but along with that, I I know at least three large lots that would look to subdivision. Someday, uh that have three trails across them, that have three separate trails across them, three horseback riding trails. I mean, is that a completely different conversation with that person? I mean, cause now, if remaining use on a three trail, uh cutting up their land. Is is far different from a uh setting up an easement for one trail cutting across their land.
I think that the intention of it would be not that, it wouldn't be to restrict, like to to have an easement. For every little trail that was on their property, but just to protect that access to trails. That might be out on the public lands that are adjacent to that private property, so that it doesn't become the situation where. All of a sudden, people used to go out and they used to get out to the BLM lands along that private property trail. And all of a sudden they can't, and then, and, you know, so we're just preserving the access. So it wouldn't necessarily even need to be that same alignment, it would just need to be more of a a preserving the access.
Okay.
They can, they can fix it so that it goes within the subdivision and across the area that they don't care about, and I think we've got one of those out there.
Yeah, where it goes around, go to the edge, go to the edge.
Yes.
Landowners to get those rerouted and closed, of course, like, well, yeah, they'll sit, I really don't like that, it's this close to my kitchen window, though. You know, there's on the other side of my lot.
Right, that's part of the conversation that would be had with the property owners, like a negotiation and. Working together and not just us coming down and saying, this is where it needs to happen or.
Yeah, but, yeah, what you said there, that working together.
Yep, definitely. Um, really quickly, the, there's a. Um, lack of, this, this is a big oversight in our code where we, we don't have an expiration for. Applications that have been in process and that have not been worked on by the applicant, like they. The work is in their court, they need to submit something to us. And we just haven't heard from them in like months, years will go by and we still don't have a way to close out that application and say, you're no longer. We need to start over, like it's, too many things have changed, the conditions on the ground have changed, this is a new application. Um, we don't have a really clear way to do that, so we would like to um establish an application expiration and some requirements for. Um, doing some due diligence to keep the application moving forward. Um, and then, let's see, in our site plan section, site plan review for commercial and multifamily developments. We don't have any way to require dedication of right of way or any of the things that we require for a subdivision development. That, you know, that's a lot of development, right? But for commercial or multifamily, we don't have the same requirements. So a, a big multifamily development could go in, we would, we have to approve that site plan. So a, a big multifamily development could go in, we would, we'd have to approve that site plan without any consideration for the impact on the roads. Whether, you know, it could be like a hundred units and.
I mean, offside roads. Are you talking about offside roads?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just like when you put in a large subdivision, you know, Bill, the road supervisor will look at it and he'll be like, okay, this is supposed to be a minor collector, we need that dedication, you might need to improve the road. But for a multifamily development, we don't have the same requirement. Isn't that odd?
Exactly. But that involves in the bulk of family, a lot of it's private.
Well, but in for future, like when we have our future multi-high density areas, um, in the H D H O, like the out it, out on Spanish, Spanish Valley Drive. Well, that's not a multifamily, but like Viewgate Terrace, that was an H D H O that just went through a site plan review. It didn't go through a subdivision process.
Doesn't the road standard show something that says if you're building this many units, you have to build your road to this size? Should be in there.
It's not in our code. No.
So we, I'm not sure the mechanism.
What's that?
For our, for my class project. And so the bond and everything for road widening and everything.
But yours was a subdivision, because it was a condo sub subdivision. Yeah, there was. So then it went under sections, Article seven subdivision standards where all those things were required. So, and it also goes for like commercial development, some, a lot of commercial development that's small, it wouldn't matter, but something larger, a larger scale, some commercial development. Um, in some cases, we would want to be able to, I know Bill Jackson would want to require some dedication right away. And, um, maybe even improvements to the road. So that would be something that we'd be looking at. It's been a long time problem that I think we would like to get fixed. Um, and then Article ten, we have a whole list of, um, definition updates. And this is a lot to do with just all the different updates that have been going on in the code over the last few years. A lot of those didn't align, they didn't match up and do any updates to the, to the Article ten definitions. So we would wanna just go through and make sure that there's, um, that all the sections in the code are synced up to the definitions and there's not contradictions, because currently we, we do find a lot of those. And then we don't have standards for grading permit, so we would want to, um, that keeps coming up over and over again. We don't have any process, grading process or. Yeah, that, that goes through the whole of this. I don't know if, you know, how much we will try to get through all of these. There might be some that we decide, okay, this is opening up a bigger can of worms that we can't deal with within this one hundred and eighty period. And so we'll just drop it. But I think there are some various, um, feasible updates that can get done and then accomplished within the time period that we have. Anybody have any last thoughts?
When is that one hundred and eighty days again?
It started in February, so two, three, June, July, August, second, it would end in August.
After the first commission meeting and second.
I would have to look specifically at what. Pretty enough. I don't have it in my head. I wrote it down somewhere.
I think to, uh, Professor Levine's point would be useful if, uh,
Some deadlines.
Yeah, so if we kind of had like a commission meeting, like commission meeting.
That's a great idea.
They take that as a compliment.
I do, yeah.
He should commission a clapper.
Something I came across this recently in, um, seventeen twenty-seven eight two oh five. There's a lot of notification requirements that I don't think the county's been able to have it doing. Like, you know, mailing people.
Is that in our land use code?
No, no.
Yeah.
I think we have to mail all affected landowners, which in this case would be.
Affected landowners means, oh, for the, are you talking about for the land use code update?
Yeah.
Um.
It'd be great. That seems, seems a little bit.
I'll go back and look at that. Yeah. Usually when that, when I read that section, it pertains to like if you, if the county was doing like a sites, but like one parcel.
I know, it reads as if that's what they had in mind.
Anyone have anything else? I think we're getting to the time where we're gonna have to start a machine meeting, so. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, uh, close this workshop and we'll reconvene in a few minutes. All right, everybody, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's, um, four oh six and I'll now open this, uh, meeting of the, regular meeting of the Grand County Commission, uh, present. Present basically our commissioners, Kevin Walker, Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Trish Hadeen, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann and myself, Jacques Hadler. We also have our, uh, county clerk, Gabriel Wojtek, our county attorney, Stephen Stocks, and our county administrator, Mallory Nassau. I will now, uh, call for everybody to stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag for which stands one nation.
Thank you. I will now, um, open our citizens to be heard session. If you're here to make comment, I'll, uh, call on folks here in the room. Just raise your hand and you can come forward and introduce yourself and make comment. And I'll, if there's anyone on, um, on our Zoom meeting, I will, I'll get to you shortly. So anyone in the chamber here to make comment? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Edwards, come forward.
Hello, good to see you all. Uh, McKay Edwards, Moab Springs Ranch. Uh, I'm here to give you an update on the property tax appeal to the State Tax Commission. I assume you've, you've also been briefed by the, uh, assessor's office, so I don't mean to step on any toes. I just wanna give it to you from my perspective. Um, we, um, had a status hearing on our appeal. This is for the, the bungalows. Kind of divide the ranch, bungalows and townhouses, but the bungalows are really my business and that's really the critical thing for me. So we're appealing nineteen bungalows. They were originally assessed at seven hundred thousand dollars. They each, um, the, the county appeal got them down to about five hundred and twenty thousand each, which is about halfway to where we think we need to be. It's about a twenty-five percent reduction. We're asking for another twenty-five percent to get down to three hundred and fifty thousand, which is still twice where we were in twenty twenty-two. But that's what our appraisal says the worth. That's what we're appealing. Um, there was a status hearing on, uh, April twenty-fifth before Judge Jensen. It was a, a telephone call. I don't know Judge Jensen, uh, from the county were, um, the assessor and the outside um, appraiser, who I am assuming that as BOE, you have delegated authority to handle this appeal to, um, the assessor and the outside appraiser, because they were the ones in attendance representing the county. The, um, judge set a hearing for September thirtieth, October first, October second. That's problematic for me, because that means I don't get a decision till after November thirtieth. So I'm gonna be paying yet another year of, of, uh, you know, excessive property tax. Um, we don't get any relief till some, you know, the ruling wouldn't come down till sometime in twenty twenty-five, according to my attorney. So, um, that's a problem for me, uh, and my business. It means all the damage we suffered last year, we're gonna, is gonna be doubled because we're gonna be backed again this year. And you don't, as I understand it, we never get that money back. It becomes a credit against future tax. So it's essentially a loan from us to you. You're welcome. Uh, the, um, uh, the, the, the other thing that I think is important for you to hear is that the judge said, where are you with settlement? He said, uh, you know, he treats it as a failure that we appear in his courtroom. He doesn't want to see us. He, and he didn't want us to leave the meeting until he knew how we were going to, uh, enter good faith settlement negotiations. The, we said, we'll talk to anyone the county, um, sends. We prefer someone from the BOE and the county commission, but that's up to the county. The assessors directed us to contact the outside appraiser and negotiate settlement with the outside appraiser. So whether you, you understand it or not, you've delegated the authority to settle this matter to an outside appraiser with no, um, direct involvement by the BOE and not even the assessor's office. Uh, we took that, that direction. We contacted on May third, we contacted the outside, uh, appraiser. Today is June fourth. We haven't had phone call, email, nothing back from the outside appraiser. And I think that's symptomatic of the problem here. It is not a good faith settlement negotiation to delegate this to an outside appraiser who actually created this problem to begin with. We spent four weeks in the summer of twenty twenty-three negotiating with this very appraiser. And at the end of four weeks of a lot of work, hundred hours on my part, data, data, data. Uh, they offered about a two or three percent reduction from the seven hundred thousand dollars. That was their offer after that much work. So we basically reached a brick wall with this very appraiser who the, the county is saying, you go settle this dispute with this outside appraiser. And you need to ask yourself, are your interests aligned with the interests of the outside appraiser? What are their interests in a dispute like this? Are they the same as yours? So I would recommend that the commission find one, two, three, I'd take all of. So I would recommend that the commission find one, two, three, I'd take all of you, I don't care. I would, I think if there's a real good faith negotiation to be had here to settle this this matter, that the commission needs to get involved and and send some actual members of BOE, at least at a minimum, to attend these these meetings. And I don't know if we'll get a meeting. We try, we hear nothing back. We've run into a brick wall. The judge said he wanted settlement on this and it's, we're both kind of be under a cloud if we go back in on September thirtieth. I obviously have a personal interest. I lose a whole summer over this. I've got this hanging over my head for September thirtieth. I've got lawyers, outside witnesses, appraisers, preparation, hundred thousand dollars probably in costs for me to get to this and a summer lost all for an appraisal that I think that, you know, a common sense says was excessive. And anyone who's talked to me from the community has expressed sympathy that this is, there's something wrong here. This is not just a thirty or forty percent dispute about, oh, this appraiser versus that appraiser. This is many multiples of of what the value should be, not, you know, some some percentage. Something went wrong, very wrong here in both the assessor's office and with the outside appraiser. We'll take it all the way to September thirtieth if that's what we have to do. I'm inviting you to enter a real discussion, a real conversation somehow on this. And, you know, if I got, if begging on my knees would help, I'd do that. I don't want to spend my summer doing this. So that's, you know, the update and I'll be happy to keep you guys updated. Thanks for giving me some extra time. I know I went past the three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, I would invite someone else from the chamber to come forward. If you want to, if you want to give comment and I would remind you that we'll be keeping comment to three minutes. So is there anyone else here in the chamber? Raise your hand if you'd like to come forward and make comment. Cliff?
I wasn't really prepared, I was hoping somebody else would take it. I thank you for the time. This is pertaining to the Bears' draft plan. And I'm just speaking for Ride With Respect, Motorized Trails Committee. Probably would have wanted to comment on this. We assume since it's in San Juan County that you wouldn't be doing so. But at the same time, I understand that, you know, this runs very close to Moab and all the way down to Mexican Hat, ninety miles. It includes Chicken Corners Trail, which is a huge, you know, I think it's the second most traveled commercial motorized route, I mean, the second most traveled route for commercial activity in the Moab area. And then Lockhart, you know, less important commercially maybe, but very important backcountry route all the way up to Tree Line and the Abajo's Shea Ridge ATV Trail. These are routes that Ride With Respect has worked on in the San Juan County ATV group sphere and San Juan County itself. And so like your points about the climbing groups, I think should apply to those other groups when it comes to motorized recreation, including San Juan County, that they've been very active and should be collaborated with. I also want to point out that this plan, like it, it may be a little misleading in terms of how drastic the proposal is for motorized management. The maps are missing motorized trails. In some cases, in other cases, they're representing them as non-motorized trails. They're currently designated motorized. Same with the OHV area designations. They're representing stuff as closed when it's currently open to OHV, which really is the difference between being a hundred percent closed or ninety-nine percent closed in terms of acreage, those open or it's actually OHV limited areas. They can be a hundred percent closed or they can be ninety-nine percent closed. It depends on the the travel plan, which is to come. But that flexibility is important for managers, whether that's the federal managers, tribal managers or anybody else. But at the same time, there should be clear parameters for planning and concepts like a cultural landscape as a monument object to protect makes it difficult to ensure accountability when it's not clearly agreed upon what that even is. So your draft letter expresses an interest in allowing active management for non-motorized recreation. I would ask you to extend that to motorized recreation. And that's partly because this distinction between low impact and presumably high impact activities is not purely a function of the mode of travel. Rather, it's the individual's behavior and the active management. And, you know, in the case of, I'll use my preference, motorcycle trail riding versus mountain biking. You know, this county has contributed a hundred dollars to the mountain bike trail maintenance for every one dollar it's contributed to the motorcycle trail maintenance for year after year. That's going to add up to meaning, yeah, motorcycling is going to be a higher impact. And and maybe it is inherently to some degree, but really the focus should be on that that active management. And it's it's not just because recreation is important for its own sake, which it it is, but even if it's not a monument or or a object or a use to be protected, it's pretty integral to appreciating the monument resources, to actually engaging in, in some cases, you know, spiritual pursuits in these areas. Like the way that you do this stuff, a lot of times is by moving around or camping in Bears' ears. And I do feel like that's been overlooked and your your letter starts to get at that. But I think it could do so a little more broadly. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, we, yeah.
Alright, anyone else here in the chambers who'd like to come forward and make comment? I'll go to Zoom and see if there's anyone on Zoom who's here to make a public comment. Someone showing up? Okay, one last call in the chambers, anybody? Alright, we will move on then. And our first, our first item is our department report and we have Grand County Active Transportation and Trails. Maddie, welcome.
Okay, before I start, I have props.
Alright.
So the reason I brought these is because I'm going to be talking about Trail Ambassador program. And when we started, it was, you know, started out taking focus, that's the biggest user group. And since then, we've expanded to have an all-inclusive focus series with focused staff. And so I wanted to show you guys kind of the more specific programming that we have, so let's test them around. Do you have questions?
Alright, thanks, Maddie.
So we've got that's motorized. We've got for people who are camping. And you can, I'll be talking for a while, so you can just kind of cruise them at your pace as they go by.
Thanks.
Got some bio questions perhaps. Absolutely. We have a kid and family focus and also. So we try to kind of customize all the education to the user group to make it something that's interesting for them. And then. And then it's, I want to dive into this, our sort of SAKI book procedures documentation. And so we have a recording sheet on there for the non-motorized and the motorized sheets. They're different depending on our grant departments. And then I do have some little goodies for you guys that we use as educational incentive items. And so you get these after you listen to me talk. Here? Well, and who's changing slides for me? Or should I do it? Yeah, let's do that, just so it not confusing with me. So, sorry about that. I guess while we wait, does anyone have any questions about the props so far?
So are these like, say, the motorized one, is this for most encounters? Is this what is each like of the, say, a guy in a UTP comes and talks to the trail ambassador or he, you know, approaches him on the trail? Would this be a general package?
It kind of depends on like that particular person. So for example, if they don't have a spill kit and they're about to go do an advanced trail, then we provide them with a spill kit. Water bottle, same thing, like if they don't have enough water, that's something we give out. And then, oh, I have one more box I'll hand around. And then there are just some general kind of standard items we have, so like electrolyte packets, right? Some people, if they're in a vehicle especially, they'll probably have enough water. But, you know, search and rescue recommends some laws of climate protection. Someone can be chugging water all day and still run into trouble.
Do you have anything equestrian focused if you run into horses?
Not besides maps. They're kind of the smallest user group and they usually come pretty well prepared because they do a lot of research when they're pulling their big trailer. They really don't want to end up in an area where they can't, you know, turn around. So they mostly go to forums and back to trade horsemen for their information. And so they're kind of a a tight-knit community. They seem to need us less compared to the high curtains come to see arches. Okay, good to go?
Alright, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so my name's Maddie Logowitz. I'm the director of Grand County Active Transportation and Trails, which is GCAT. And this is my annual report, so I'm going to break it into three sections. I'm going to talk about what happened in two thousand and twenty-three. I'm going to talk about what we've done so far and then looking ahead, what we're going to be up to later this year. And I'm trying to keep this down to ten minutes for you guys, so there's going to be some slides.
Thank you.
There should be some slides that have like a whole bunch of information. I'm not going to really go over it, you know, hopefully you got a chance to see it in your packets. Or if you have questions, you know, you can ask me and then we will go through the whole list. So, starting out, I'm going to go over these in more detail. But basically, last year for the Trails program, we've got Trails and Responsible Rec programs. We did construction, trail maintenance and design. If we go to the next slide, I'll go over these in a little more detail. So this is everything we did last year on the Trails for trail maintenance. This includes staff and volunteer hours, so some of these big numbers you're seeing are combined. And the color, the blue is BLM mountain bike trails, which is the majority of what we do. It's what the county, it's what Grand County is responsible for maintaining. Anything we've we've built, we are responsible to maintain. The green is the Forest Service, which I broke out, so it's kind of a different season for us. And then yellow is hiking and purple is equestrian. And then that little one on the end, it's maybe an orange, is climbing. So as you can see, we mostly focus on the areas that we're like legally responsible for, but then we assist with all non-motorized recreation. So next slide, this is just a bit of a simplified version. This is showing those different areas by trail network rather than by individual trail names. Can you next, please? Okay, so we did three different types of trail maintenance. We do kind of urgent response, routine trail maintenance and then intensive in certain areas that just need like a really big refresh. And so you can see, you know, we've, we kind of try and hit lots of areas and routine maintenance in the season, but then we focus on one area for intensive maintenance. Last year, that was Fond du Lac left south. So next slide. So this is just some pictures to show you kind of what that looked like last year. We also worked with Telluride Adaptive, which is a guiding group that comes out here with folks on hand cycles. And so we work with them to identify routes that they want to use without spotters. And so when we, when we did this intensive trail maintenance, we also widened those ramps so that they could actually get through with their hand cycles, which are larger.
Is that part of why like Miners Loop and Azureite had a lot more hours dedicated to them? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, those, those rock ramps hadn't been maintained since they were constructed. And then also that was an area they used heavily and it's a good area because it's not as heavily used as other networks. And so we kind of, yeah, Miners Loop, we tried to make that for them.
Nice.
Okay, next slide. I'm going to go into the Forest Service work just a little bit, show you what that looks like. It's a different kind of trail work. Next, please. So last year, we did a lot of bridge work with them. So this was just a skinny, maybe, yes, you wrote across it, so sorry, we got rid of it. We put in something that actually fit the Forest Service requirements.
Actually, as I'm getting older, I get more and more scared of that feature every year.
So yeah, so we did a few bridges for them as well as other other trail projects. And then next slide, our big construction project last year was Kestrel Run Trail. This is just the, so that one thousand hours, that's staff and volunteers. We got a ton of volunteer help on it. And that's a picture of Hannah, listening to Big Rock. Next slide. So this shows where it is. So for those of you who are familiar with it, it's in Sand Flats. It's part of the Raptor Route. And then next slide shows kind of the broader context. So purple is Raptor Route, orange is Full enchilada. The reason we're putting so much work into building this new route is because full enchilada is extremely popular. It gets twenty-four thousand riders a year. It supports a lot of bike shops. It supports a lot of shuttle companies. So it's really important to our local economy. And that last leg called Porcupine Rim, it's very remote, it's very technical and it's a search and rescue hotspot. I just refreshed before I came here on the stats and in two thousand and twenty, there was eighteen search and rescues. And most of those involve helicopters because you can't, you can't access it by vehicle.
That was a slow year, two thousand and twenty presentation.
So it, yeah, so it's a pretty big deal when people get hurt in that particular area. And so the idea behind this Raptor Route is to basically create an alternative ending. It's part of the same system, but it's intermediate level. It's more accessible to either get yourself out or for search and rescue to come in. And it's about nine and a half miles so far.
It's also closer to town and more available, like we've been doing a lot of the NICA kids practices out there recently and it's an easy place for them to enjoy, whereas Porcupine, you'd never take them on Porcupine.
Yeah, the crews, actually, they just told me this today, they're working up there a little bit and they're starting to encounter people who have not heard of the enchilada, the enchilada. They've only heard of the Raptor Route and that's what they've come to ride, so I'm excited about that. Next slide shows some pictures of what Kestrel Run looks like. So fortunately, in our environment, everything we build is beautiful. It's really, it's a really nice trail. I recommend checking it out. And then next slide, finally, we did a large design project last year. So this project, it's in collaboration with San Juan County and the BLM. Mud Springs is an area, it's in Spanish Valley on the San Juan County side. It's a BLM designated mountain bike focus area. And so we have a trail designer on staff, so that's a picture of him standing in a bush as we're shooting grade. And we came up with a three-phased design plan. It went through, the first phase went through the full NEPA. It got full funding and so it's shovel-ready as soon as we kind of figure out logistics. Okay, next slide. So we're still in two thousand and twenty-three, but we're going to talk about, we just talked about Trails program. We're going to talk about the Responsible Recreation Program. So some accomplishments from last year, we were awarded the Leave No Trace Gold Certification for a program. So that's the first time that's been done in the whole country, so we're proud of that. And then also Leave No Trace, they've mostly gold certified like national parks or locations. And Utah doesn't have any of those designated currently. Arches is working on it right now, but we were the first in Utah to get designated. This chart, I'll give a little bit more explanation, but basically encounters is the total number of people that the Trail Ambassadors ran into out in the field. So that's anyone who saw them, who, you know, they waved, waved hi, said hello, but they didn't necessarily kind of give them the whole educational spiel. And then the yellow, the informative interactions, that means they actually talked to someone for, you know, anywhere from three to ten minutes, right, imparting educational information. And then preventative search and rescue interactions, we log when we feel that we've imparted information or materials like water, water bottles, that have prevented a search and rescue. So those are our stats for last year. We also have been working with the Solid Waste Special Services District to work on how to handle human waste in this area because we have so many campers who are coming here dispersed camping. We can't put them in the mainstream garbage in this area because of the compactor. So they need to be put in these designated receptacles. So we've been working on kind of advertising that since it's different than what other communities do and also supplying wag bags to people because, you know, people are maybe used to digging catholes, which we can't really do here. It's too dry. So basically, the amount, the weight of human waste that ended up in those receptacles was. So basically, the amount, the weight of human waste that ended up in those receptacles was close to nine tons. So that's more than an adult African elephant in weight. So that's stuff that was diverted from maybe being out at these camping areas, right? And then finally, USU completed a study on the Trail Ambassador Program to kind of assess the effectiveness. And they had three main findings, which were that it does produce more knowledgeable visitor. It reinforces sustainable recreation behaviors. And then the one that I kind of, I think is most interesting is that it improves visitor experience. So that kind of indicates that there's an appetite amongst our visitors that they want this type of service or maybe expecting it. Okay, next slide. This is just the trail ambassadors celebrating their designation. Next slide. This is one of the ones, I'm not going to go into it too much, but basically know that we did a lot of educational events, outreach and volunteer events last year. This is a summary of volunteer engagement last year. Volunteers are really crucial for how we run operations. Like we factor in volunteer time to all of our projects. And so, you know, not only do we get a total of, what is that? About 1,700 hours of help, but also when I write the grants, I factor in volunteer hours as a match. So their, their time, every hour a volunteer works is worth over $31. So we actually leverage that to get funds for our grants to pay our staff to do the trail work. Okay, next slide. This is our end of year celebration last year, our volunteer appreciation. So that's, that's our staff, partners and all of our volunteers. We had dinner. Another one I won't go into too much, but basically the main things to take away from this slide are that last year we pursued some in-house or some certifications that we could do trainings in-house to save money rather than having our seasonal staff trained year after year. We also have been working on filling, filling in some knowledge gaps. So like the state O H V manager came here and gave us all the training so we could learn more about O H V stuff, because that's not my strong suit. And, and then also just professional development. Okay, next slide. This is the last slide for 2023. So in addition to tax funding, so our programming uses optional sales tax and then two different types of the T R T transient rib tax. I figure the commission is probably pretty familiar with that, but here's all of our other funding that you guys might not be aware of. So we, we have a lot of grants primarily with the state as well as agreements with federal and non-federal sources. And then we, we have a significant donations to from the public or from, you know, private enterprises that use the trails. They'll donate as well. So that total number, if you add all those up, it's about half a million we're bringing in and sort of outside revenue. And then for the project with San Juan County, we helped them write those grants and those were awarded 350,000 for Mud Springs Phase One. Okay, I'm going to catch my breath trying to go fast. Does anyone have any questions about 2023 before we move to the present? Or in a beer. Thank you. All right. So I'll go over these, I'll go over the trails program and the rec program, recreational, responsible recreation program in more detail. So the main thing to take away from this slide is that this year so far, we've heard back from two grants. 95,000 for trail maintenance and signage, because some of our signage is getting kind of ratty out there. And 90,000 for updating our non-motorized trails master plan. The last time that plan was updated was 2011. So it's out of date. All right, next slide. Again, this is just everywhere we've worked this spring, staff and volunteer hours combined. So like I mentioned, we kind of pick a focus area for the season. Usually that's written into a grant. So this year, Mag Sevens on our grants, we've been focusing there as well as Pipe Dream Trail. Here's some nice trail maintenance photos for you all. Next slide please. We also did our second annual sort of city collaborative volunteer event. Last year it was called Moab Facelift. This year it was the Moab Spring Spruce Up. And so this year we had eight project sites. It included GCAT slash Trail Mix hosted one, the Motorized Trail Committee hosted a project, Grand County Leads, and then the City B L M and Utah Open Lands also had projects. And so this year we had 75 participants, mostly locals. They, that equivalent in the, you know, the alchemy of volunteer grant hours is $13,000 at 420 hours. So pretty good. And this is an event we want to do annually. We really want to grow it and we want to incorporate voluntarism into it. So we can actually bring people to town for the weekend to help a lot of communities do that. So. And you'll notice on the left is my old boss, the county, Zachariah Levine, moving a big rock. So I got to boss him around for a day. It's fun for me. Okay, next slide. This is also the first year we, we have a full-time motorized trail ambassador. So that's Kelton up front. He's out on the trails. We also have two U T Vs that we purchased with O H V R grant funding. And he's, you know, focusing on popular trail heads with, you know, inexperienced user groups. That's mostly who he's talking to. So he's, he's primarily at Poison Spider and Hell's Revenge this season. And he's been working on building out programming that's more specific for the motorized community because they, you know, even for incentive items, right? There's stuff that they want that's different than the non-motorized group. So he's kind of tailoring it like you've seen with all those different features. So it's just a nice slide of, who has the BioCrest containers right now? Oh, they've gone to the end. So anyway, just a slide of them at work. We do have, in addition to the motorized team out there, we still have hiking, mountain biking and climbing focused groups out there. I won't go too much into this. Basically, we are on track. Same as last year, we do most of our big volunteer events for trail work in the fall. For this main.
Trail was that in the last picture?
Uh, that is Hidden Valley. Well, Pipe Dream, maybe below Hidden Valley. Would be my guess. That may have been a maintenance Monday.
Right.
When the, the one that the committee picks the spot, we kind of facilitate. Okay, so for trainings, again, we basically invested last year in getting some certifications. So we're doing a lot of those trainings in-house now, which is awesome. It's cheaper and it gives us more flexibility with scheduling. And then we also have been providing some trainings to other agencies. So we did, we actually learned Authority of the Resource, which is one of our ways we educate from N P S. And then this year we trained their, their staff. So we've kind of mastered it, become the teachers at school. And then we also did, we worked with a number of groups to do the inter-agency guide training. So this is for any guides on public lands, they can come to this training. If you go to the next slide, you'll see, yeah, so I forget exactly how many people came. It was at least 100, it was maybe 200 guides. And we, we presented about our programming there. So coming up, we are, we're tapering off on our, our spring season. So trail ambassadors, we still have a few out there, but they're kind of tapering down. Trail crew, we have a few people out there in the early mornings, but we kind of have a mini furlough and then we move into the Forest Service season. So we'll be up there probably, probably camping. So again, if you're emailing me, there'll be a little bit of a delay. We also are working with the B L M to put up some trailhead informational pavilions that will provide shade and more space for signage and also can be a replacement for the tents for the trail ambassadors. Fall slash early winter is when we'll start the non-motorized trails update. That's going to be a good winter project for us. And then for Mud Springs, there's a, there's a build window, so it can only be constructed in the fall. So getting a little close to the fall season for that to be this year, but maybe this year, probably next year, we'll start that. For the responsible rec program, the focus this year is going to be expanding that volunteer program so we can partner staff with volunteers and kind of expand our reach a little bit more. And then this, I could talk a lot about this. I figured if folks are interested, I could do a separate presentation for you. But we're also working with economic development that's here on a bunch of projects that include working with a videographer who came and shot last fall on some educational videos. We're also working with the K Z M U news team to do podcasts that are sort of like adventure, search and rescue, preventative, search and rescue focused, and then continuing to explore the world of online digital management. So that includes all the trail information that's out on different apps and websites as well as all the maps that are out in the world. So that's kind of a tricky solution or tricky problem. So we're, you know, working towards figuring out the best approach for that. And that's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Maddie. Questions, comments for Maddie? Bill?
Mud Springs, a lot of people are very concerned that just what you just spoke to, pushing it out of here. There's a lot of the local community, especially the high school groups and stuff that are waiting. What's the reason we can't start this year?
Unfortunately, the, the project, sort of the trail champion slash project manager is leaving San Juan County. And so they want to transfer the contracts to the B L M. So basically, we're just waiting to put out the R F P for the first phase of building that will be machine built. So it's, it's basically, yeah, who's going to send out that R F P? And honestly, it could be Grand County. That is an option if the commission were interested in that. It's, there's sort of three partners in it. It's just figuring out who does what.
Would that sort of be at the discretion of San Juan County though?
I think, um, yes, definitely need to be more conversations about it. My sense is that they're supportive of the project. They're just feeling a bit overwhelmed with the project management, considering that that staff person is leaving. B L M would also be a good option. It's just a little tricky for us to maybe, there's some paperwork stuff, basically. But we've also, yeah, we're exploring different options about how to, how to approach that. But I might come back to you guys and ask if we can hold the contract. It's another possibility.
Yeah. Steven?
You said that you guys occasionally camp overnight. Do you guys do that as the trail ambassador program?
No, as the trail crew.
As the trail?
Yeah, because we're camping near the work site. So rather than driving like four hours a day, we're camping. Yeah, especially there's a road closure this, this summer. So it's going to be really tricky to.
So that's almost exclusively up in the La Salle's when you're working up there in the summertime?
Yes.
All right, anyone else? Thanks so much, Maddie. It's great, it's great to see the trail ambassador program blossoming like it is. And I know it's got national recognition and we, yeah, we're proud of it.
Now you guys get your.
Treats. Thank you.
There's kind of a weird, you know, when you compare it to all the other places. You've got a lot of little links that people like bag their dog up in the media.
Oh, okay.
So that's, so that's, you can snap it to your backpack and just take the bag and there it goes.
You snap to somebody else's backpack?
We can't.
Is that a motorized, you know, grabs?
Sure.
The motorized spill kit?
Yes, yes, it is. We have a lot of them.
How's that?
Yeah.
All right, appreciate it, Maddie. We will move on. We don't have any agency reports today. So we'll move on to general reports. And as usual, we'll start with the commission member disclosures. Is there anything, any member of the commission has to disclose before today's meeting? Evan?
I'll just mention that in regards to the Bear's Year's Letter, I have a special recreation permit in both the Monticello B L M and the Manchurian Soul National Forest.
Okay, thanks, Evan. Anybody else have anything to disclose here? Okay, thanks. We will move on to general commission reports and future considerations. I'll start on the other side of the, the dais. Kevin?
Um, I have nothing to report that isn't part of an engine document. Okay.
Evan?
The EMS week just passed by. It was a really good turnout with a couple of different barbecues. And UAC was really kind of pushing a lot of that stuff across the state. And so, and of note is there is a new medical advisor, actually two, for the EMS district. So that's nice to kind of have that team maturing and it seems it's some good partnerships there. So excited about that. Just kind of glancing back to see if I have other notes. I think that's all I got for now.
All right, thanks, Evan. Bill?
Yeah, I think a bunch of us participated in the Better Destinations workshop. I don't remember exactly what it was called after we, they presented here that we then went over.
Yeah, to the steering committee.
To the steering committee. So there was definitely, clearly a lot of time and effort that was put into that. It seemed like a ton of work went into that plan. So it would be great if that all gets finalized. I was part of a community development policy steering committee that is through UAC that's watching different things up at the state this coming year. I was in a CERDA meeting up in Price. They hired a grant writer to assist, I think, what are they, we part of four or five counties? To help the counties with any grant writing needs that they have. And so I think that there were some requirements for that individual to have experience in that area, but she will be, and it is a she. She will be available to help counties on different grants if there's any need.
Is that similar to Tammy Doc Stetter's old position?
No, I think it's a new.
It's a new position.
Because they received a grant to hire some.
Okay.
So it's specific. It's a specific grant writer. It's not with, I think, town wrote with C I B and C D B G.
Right.
But this is for any needs.
Across the board. Great. Okay.
Let's see, also part of the Southeast Colorado River Watershed Council meeting. Also had a airport board meeting and there's some needs I think we're going to reach out to Mr. Stocks or around the insurance requirements on some of the contracts they have out there for different types of leases. Actually, contracts, not right. And then I know that we had one email on the Spanish Valley Biopath. It sounds like we kind of need to get a meeting there and this is part of my future. And then I've had a couple of residents in Thompson reach out, Thompson Springs, excuse me, regarding what we are on the plat amendment. So if we can, those are just future things that we need to kind of keep fire built under.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Trish?
Okay, let's see. I had a planning commission meeting and a couple of things that Elisa, I will go over because we just had a meeting with Elisa. But Planning and zoning does now have on iWorks where you can look up any kind of development that, applications that are currently in process. So that's pretty cool. Again, there's a county and city wide housing survey. So we just encourage anybody and everybody to participate in that. And let's see, I went to the local watershed council with Bill and that is a part of the Utah Watershed Council Act. There's 11 local watershed councils either in development or have been developed, been developed. So the southeastern council is currently in that development process. And the goal is to improve watersheds. We are not considered a decision-making body. I went to a mosquito abatement meeting last night. It's such a great board. And Steve, who runs that, Steve and Shannon are just amazing. So it's really great to see it just moving along. They did state that they're still working on their financial audit. I will state that. So it was like, okay. Via the management report, they are starting to see some minimal mosquito activity. Water is starting to come into that, that fishy there. I guess that'd be the, oh, the west side of the Mount Sim Reserve. And so once it gets in there, it floods those middle ponds and that's where you get quite a bit of mosquito activity. And they are in the process. And I thought this was kind of cool, buying a drone that will work at mosquito abatement. And I was like, oh, they said we need a place to put it. I'm like, well, how big is this drone? I'm like, but it's huge, right? Because its payload is 25 pounds. So that's, that's pretty cool.
So that's the different stuff that counts a lot better?
Yeah, yeah. So you don't have to be, yeah, yeah, pretty crazy, right? So Shannon's went to, yeah, he's a pilot of these. He had to go to this pilot school for this drone. Because the drones, you know, $50,000. So I suppose you don't want to just wreck it randomly, right? A pound of line or whatever. And then this last weekend, I was at the Canyonlands P R C rodeo. I just want to thank Angie. It's such, such a huge event. Brings in a ton of people. Saturday night, we actually sold out like right away, had to close the gates because it's just a huge event. And Krista Wilson for putting that on. It's just, it's really lucrative to the county and it's such a great event for families and super fun.
Great. Awesome. Yeah.
Oh, and I saw, I have to say, I saw, you know, I got to shake Josh Frost's hand. I'm sure you guys don't care, but very famous writer. I'll just state that. And he was waiting. Sorry?
Yes, uh, Friday night nearly sold out. Saturday night actually did sell out. Uh, it did happen to turn people away. Uh, from attending the event and that was with the additional seating that was purchased. Uh, they have another thirty-five seats uh that I felt like to, and still have.
Awesome, yeah.
Uh, Sunday wasn't sold out, but had thirty-seven percent growth over last year. Uh, so it it's it's on the road to actually attending Sunday also. Um, the rodeo club currently has uh has all sponsor shop, uh sponsorship. Uh, positions filled and actually has a waiting list uh in Grand County for sponsors uh to actually partake in. Uh, numerous, to piggyback even farther, uh numerous compliments and praises. Uh, remain to the participants, the spectators, the vendors, the presentation of the host facility. The arena, the dirt work for the arena and the arena staff. Uh, everyone received uh several uh several commendations and compliments. Uh, on of the work that was being done uh and how busy they actually were. Uh, every night, uh, I think I didn't actually, uh, every night, uh. At the uh rodeo, there was a standing ovation uh giving honoring local emergency. Our local emergency first responders, our military veterans and our teacher of the year. So. That was my.
Awesome, alright. Sounds like a super successful event.
Yes.
Yeah. Good, good, alright, uh.
I attended the Four Corners Mental Health uh uh Board. Uh, I wanted to to begin with, uh, it's a very good board. They have people on it that have been on it quite a bit. And they also have newer people and it it's an impressive board because they. Comb over the the financials and look at things very closely. Larry Jensen is the commissioner from Harvard, uh, from Price, Harvard County. It's exceptional. I mean, it, working with with him is such a delight. He is conscientious, he works hard and he's, yeah, so I, and it's, and it's the same with the health board. Both boards. Dedicated uh boards I work with, they meet every other month and it meets in Green River and it takes a lot of time. And so it's, it's nice to, you know, I might work something out where we will acknowledge their contribution. They're all volunteers. So it's great. At the Four Corners meeting, uh, there's some exciting stuff happening. They're going to be opening a re- uh receiving center. And uh, it's going to be in Price because that's where most of the population from this area is. But it will be a place to bring people who are in need of twenty-four, three-hour service. Of a nurse and a doctor and people need, uh, it will also offer a social detox center. And it will be available to our, us as well. It will involve if somebody really needs it, you know, a sheriff's office. So we'll have to get them to Price or meet a person from. Price to transfer halfway.
That's what I was gonna say, like York County Jail does so much work as far as holding individuals that. Uh, you know, are struggling with mental disabilities and or substance abuse. So it's, it's really great that that facility will be in place.
Yes, it will be in place. It will be open, you know, the beginning of uh twenty-five. It's a process, hiring and uh bill, you know, getting the building up to par. It will have uh. There will be two pads available for people who are detoxing right then. You know, because that's a different need than people are coming in for other emergency needs. So I, it's very exciting. Uh, they're working on workforce housing in Moab. Looking very closely at a piece of property near their property to purchase and uh create workforce housing for employees. So it's uh, it's very, we've been very active and very good at the uh. At the southeastern Utah Health District meeting. It was uh really interesting learning about how they work with people who are active drug users. To prevent spreading of disease. And to create an open communication so that people feel comfortable going to a safe place. Their goal isn't into getting them into rehab, but what does happen because they've created this relationship. Is when a person gets to that point that they feel ready, there's somebody they feel comfortable going to. So it's, it's a very good program. There was a discussion on the difficulty of enforcing safe housing. Right now, just because people are living in houses that are very unsafe. Black mold to fire hazards to, you know, just, you know, electrical issues to ventilation. But yet at the same time, that's their only shelter. And how do we work with this? And so there was a, a lot of discussion on, you know, ways that we, you know. Perhaps looking at the uh three counties coming together and creating like a, some way to have short-term. Emergency housing available for people that are in. You know, it's, it's, it's real balancing act because they're not, they're living in a place that is really not healthy and and very dangerous. But yet, it's especially in the winter, you don't want them out in the, in the street. So it's a lose-lose situation. And so we're. Uh, they're actively trying to figure out ways that we can better address that. Uh, I also, um, met, we had a Economic Development Advisory Board. And this is the time of month that I work with, with these boards that are very involved and very engaged. Our Economic Development uh Advisory Board is amazing. We have the chair here, Forrest Rogers, and he runs a wonderful meeting. We uh had a update on the Student Success Program and it's going very well. Uh, we discussed the visiting Better Destinations. Uh, uh Ben went to an IPW trade show in Los Angeles and met. Had forty-two meetings with travel planners. Just going to Washington DC and meeting. Anyway, and I loved, uh, one of the great things that uh Ben worked to have happen was he's, he got the love team to come to Moab. We've been talking about, look, we've been working with him for years, but he told him they had to come to Moab. They had to come and see what our situation is. And they, it was a great thing for him to do because he walked, they walked away going, oh, you are different. You know, they, it was a real, and uh, so I really appreciated that. I was excited because there were some times I was frustrated. Because I felt like when we were talking to about our issues, they didn't quite get it. Now they will. Uh, let me see, I could go on, uh, let's see. We talked about the House Act for Affordable Housing that uh Lee, uh Senator Lee is working. And a rural outdoors development act. And we also discussed. Because there's so many motels and ho- uh hotels up for sale in Grand County. If perhaps one of the grants that we are in charge of could go to the purchase of. One of those motels, hotels, turn it into efficiency apartments. You know, we can buy a trust or something of that nature. So this is a very beginning stages, but I think it's a very, that's just an example of this board's ability to think outside the box.
Yeah, I think there was something similar like that Durango. For some reason, I feel like there's a whole hotel that turned into, yeah, that's.
You know, it would be really nice because we could probably get one that was downtown. So that the people that worked in it wouldn't have, you know, they, they would be close to their work. So I think this will be something we will be looking, you know, as a possibility. There's a lot of hurdles to cross and we definitely don't want to be landmarks. So, yeah, it was a very good meeting. And those were the meetings I attended since our last meeting.
Thanks, Mary. Uh, I had a couple of things, not too many. I attended the uh Trail to Tomorrow Steering Committee meeting along with Bill and I agree with him that. Uh, those guys have worked super hard and come up with some really interesting stuff. But, yeah, uh, uh, it's. Yeah, that's, it's a great project and I very much look forward to the um end report from our uh. Folks there. Uh, also attended the, and I helped out at the Moab Chamber Golf Tournament on Friday morning. It was an awesome turnout. We're super cool event. I've worked at every year I've been on the commission and um. They had a super successful year this year, uh, raising money for three scholarships for, for Moab seniors going off to college. Uh, as well as uh outreach for the chamber in general and um. And kudos to their new uh executive director, Cassie, put on a, put on a great event, her first kind of big, big thing with the chamber. So. Excellent result there. And I also wanted to um, uh, say thank you to our HR director, Renee Baker. Who will be leaving our community as well as the county. I think her last day is this Friday. Um, and so Renee, thank you very much for your service. It's been a pleasure working with you. I think you've been a, a great professional and. Uh, uh, we'll miss you very much. And that is all that I have today. So we will move on and uh elected officials are next. Uh, Gabe, do you have anything to report today?
Yeah, um, so just a quick election update. Um, two thousand one hundred and twelve ballots will be sent tomorrow. That's the fifth of June. From Salt Lake City to vo- any voters registered Republican. Uh, we expect those ballots to hit the mailboxes this week on Thursday and Friday. And anyone newly registered to vote or re- currently registered and unaffiliated. Uh, may still register and affiliate Republican and receive a ballot for what is a Republican-only primary. Uh, we will be doing one, at least one follow-up mailing of ballots from our printers on Monday, June tenth. Uh, after which time we will direct newly registered and affiliated voters to cast their ballots in person. At here at the courthouse during the early voting period. So that early voting period uh will begin on June eleventh, a week from today. And that goes until June twenty-fourth, the day before Election Day, which is the twenty-fifth. That early voting uh or in-person voting, it's kind of a bit of a misnomer, uh, is open from nine AM to four PM. Here during uh Monday through Friday. And it is uh, and voting on Election Day is open from seven AM to eight PM. We're gonna be rolling out a new ballot drop box uh in the courthouse lobby that y'all might see. Uh, we were able to use HAVA funds. That's the Help America Vote Act. Uh, administered through the Lieutenant Governor's Office. Um, that, it's gonna help with traffic flow out in the lobby, especially for the November general. Where we have our ballot marking devices on one side. Uh, and if, and so the, the ballot drop box that we have under our windows isn't really the ideal location when we have those machines out. And so we'll have a, a new professional uh ballot drop box. That'll be really easy to see that. Because we always encourage people if they wish to, uh, if they wish to come and deposit their, their, uh, you know, their completed and sealed and signed ballots. Uh, in person, uh, we very much encourage that. In fact, if, uh, you know, prevents us from having to pay postage, return postage. Um, and uh, and so that, that, we just want to make sure that that's as easy as possible. And June fourteenth is the last day to register to vote via regular ballot. So that's not, not, um. And you can still vote uh up to Election uh Day with a provisional ballot. Uh, one last thing with regards to the elections is that our Public Logic and Accuracy Test is scheduled to take place here. At the Clerk Auditor's Office on Monday, this, this next Monday, June tenth at nine AM. And that's the process that we take uh before statutorily required before every election. Where whereby we test all of our uh equipment, election equipment that's used to, to uh mark and tabulate ballots. So any members of the public or the press are very welcome to come and, and ask questions and it's a, it's a great opportunity for that. So. We encourage folks to show up if they're interested. Um, and, and, and any other general election questions, uh, don't hesitate to reach the, to come into the Clerk Auditor's Office. Or, or call in at two five nine thirteen twenty-one. Um, I was really eager to make a, an announcement uh regarding hiring, but there's some. HR hoops that are still needing to be jumped through that, uh, that's preventing me from appropriately doing that today. So. Um, hopefully for the next uh meeting, I'll have a, 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 a great announcement to share with you all. And I'm busy right now fulfilling a high volume of grammar requests. I'm working with the Tax Commission, the Assessor and the Treasurer to enter values and derive a tax rate. Which you all will certify at the second meeting in June as, as is custom. Um. And there are some scheduling of BOE appeal hearings uh later this month and in July. And uh, it, it seems like we're gonna need to um get ahead of uh communication with you all as the Board of Equalization. Regarding the, the dates of those hearings and, and potentially uh loop in the attorney here. Because I, I, I don't think the ideas that you all would attend. I might be, I might be wrong there. Uh, but certainly, uh, y'all being aware of what's going on, I think is, is more than appropriate. That's all I have for now.
Great, thanks, Gabe. I had a quick question. What, what is the last day that uh people can register to vote for the primary? Do you, do you know?
Uh, well, so register to vote and, and vote with a regular ballot is June fourteenth.
Okay.
And after that, they would have to vote on a, with a provisional ballot.
Okay.
And those who are registered Democrat right now can't, it's too late to change your affiliation. So that's, yeah. Only unaffiliated can now affiliate or folks that aren't registered at all can register and affiliate Republican to vote in this primary.
And there's no Democratic uh primary? No, no one on the bill? Got it, thanks. Alright, uh, Stephen?
Just an update to Mr. Edwards's comments that he had earlier. So Mr. Edwards is represented. He has an attorney. His attorney is communicating for him on behalf of him. Uh, it's true that the court is always gonna ask for mediation. Uh, courts like to do ADR, which is Alternative Dispute Resolution. So his, his attorney and their appraiser are going to meet with myself, Debbie and our appraiser. To see if we can make uh headway and try to resolve them. Uh, that's standard process. Uh, we'll see if we can reach an agreement. I, I think our valuations probably are, are pretty far off because Mr. Edwards views them as akin to hotel rooms. Uh, but they're all heated separately and they're going to condos, but that's where we disagree and. Uh, perhaps we can try to find a resolution. So mediation is ongoing. We want that to happen. The court anticipates that that's going to happen. I talked to Debbie about that. Uh, that's where I left earlier is to see if she wanted to come. Uh, but she says, you know, she has, she has no desire. She's not trying to hide anything. Uh, it's mediation is, is a standard process. Uh, I, I don't know if, if you should like to attend to that. I, I don't know that it's going to be very. I, I mean, it could be a productive use of your time or perhaps not, but really what's gonna happen is. Our expert, their expert are gonna kind of talk about different things, like different kind of stances. And then normally we have a mediator float between them. And go back and forth and say, hey, they, they give me evaluations, five hundred thousand. And they'll say, oh, no, that's not it. Back, back and forth. So, uh, just wanted to inform you that I can't speak directly to him because he's representing. So I wanted to add that. Um, that's standard, uh, standard course. And Debbie has said that if she, if there's questions that you folks have, well, reach out, contact her about that process. And we'll have more of them that, that come up and he's correct. Um, he'll, he'll log the, the request and continue to fight and see the argument. Similar to the other uh appeals that we've had, like for the uh. Big one that we've had for the pipeline.
Yeah.
Essentially, uh, so there's that. So that's everything that I have.
Great. Thanks for the clarification on that, Stephen. Appreciate the quick, quick.
Can I ask a question around that? Um, with that, uh, although we have kind of hired someone to represent us and, and our duties delegated. Um, with us ultimately being the end all, I think in, in. Previous scenarios, we've been kind of advised to avoid uh conversations or meeting outside those formal. That sort of applies here as well.
Correct, okay.
And it's going, where, where it's at is, it, it now is, it's different. It's up before, uh, going to be up before the State Tax Commission. And well, where mediation is generally an opportunity for the two parties to kind of communicate and try to make uh, make an agreement. That's, it's kind of separate from part of what the BOE does, but it's also separate in nature kind of where it's, where it's progressed. It still involves the county, but in a different setting. Now we're better set for several parties.
Great, appreciate it. Um, I don't, is, is Sheriff Wiggins on Zoom? He's not, okay. Um, I will move on to our county administrator report. Quinn, do you have anything to, uh, to report here? Thanks. Um, all right. Uh, we are finished with our general reports now. So we'll move on to our general business action items. And the first action item that we have on our agenda today is revisions to Economic Development Advisory Board Bylaws and Resolution. And presenting for this are Ben Fredericill, our Economic Development Director, as well as Forrest Rogers, our, our, uh, Chairman of our Board for, um, Economic Development, uh, other acronym, Board. Right? Is that right, Board? Sorry. Okay. EDA, right. Yes. Soon to be, uh, right. Okay. All right, guys. Thank you so much for being here today. I'll, uh, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Forrest Rogers, Chair of the Soon To Be Economic Opportunity Advisory Department. I've suggested to the Board that we replace economic with monetary. And the acronym becomes M O A B.
Oh, wow.
But we'll see if that flies with the commission. The, uh, these amended bylaws have been approved both by, uh, Commission Administration and the County Attorney. Um, and they're basically changes, um, reflective of changes in state statutes as they affect the, um, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. It also includes, um, a greater consistency with the other bylaws of other county boards. So County Administration has been helping us bring these into alignment. And you may remember that the, a bylaws that we have now were the result of the consolidation of two other boards. When the, uh, Economic Diversification and Rural County Grant Opportunities became available. So this is really just a major cleanup and streamlining of the bylaws. There are a couple of major changes. One is that we, in the, but the existing bylaws, it calls for an ex, a voting member from the Department of Workforce Services. Given their workload and given the fact that their representatives have been unable to attend our meetings over most of the last twelve months. We've recommended changing that to having a voting member approved by the Commission who has expertise in workforce development, expertise or demonstrated experience. That essentially gives the Commission through the Advisory Board the opportunity to identify people that are not, identify individuals in that role that are not reporting to another agency where their time and their, the degree to which they can be involved is affected by some other organization. Doesn't mean we won't necessarily end up with somebody from the Department of Workforce Services. But it, it gives us more flexibility in making sure that that, uh, expertise is reflected and represented on the board. The other major change is the fact that we've cleaned up the bylaws. The bylaws as they currently exist call for both a quorum and voting on any action to be done by a mem, by a majority of all board members. That includes the seven voting and the eight to twelve ex officio members. We've streamlined that because several meetings, we've had more ex officio members than voting members. And it seemed irresponsible to actually make a decision and forward to the Commission a recommendation based on a minority of voting members. The ones that you all have appointed. So we've changed that. It is, the bylaws now read a majority of voting board members. Again, there are seven members on the board. Anything you need to add? Any questions, comments, concerns?
You want to have any, uh, Mary?
I move to approve the suggested revisions to the, uh, Economic Development Advisory Board Bylaws and Resolutions as presented.
Thanks, Mary. And Bill was seconding. Uh, so I have a motion on the table from Commissioner McGann, a second from Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion?
Excellent presentation, Forrest.
Thank you.
Very clear.
Yeah. All right. Thanks. Then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that motion passes unanimously. All right. Thanks, gentlemen.
Before I leave, before Ben leaves, I'd like to take just a moment to give you more detailed information about the Student Career Success Center. Last year, the Commission supported a recommendation from the Advisory Board to invest two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the startup of the Student Career Success Center. It, it started right after school began last fall. At the time of high school graduation, there were about thirty students in the success center. They graduated, nine of them, including two who joined last fall as juniors. That's a remarkable impact that your vote, uh, your authorization made for the school system, for the high school in particular and for the students there. And, um, I'd note that Kari Taylor, who is overseeing, was overseeing that school, has been appointed to be the pr, the new principal of the high school. So you're responsible for being able to give that, that school a real kickstart. So thank you for that.
Thanks for the update. Yeah, I appreciate it. All right, we're, thanks. We're on to Agenda Item Number Two, uh, Action Item Ordinance Approving the Amended Development Agreement for the Alternative Dwelling Overlay District located at twenty-two thirty-one South Highway one ninety-one. And this one is Alisa. Is Alisa on Zoom? Did you guys see? Are you, are you on, uh, Zoom, Alisa? Or a representative from Planning and Zoning? And this is the one that we had the, uh, public hearing, this is at the last meeting. Yeah, so we were.
Brooke says she wants to do it. I would, uh, I would move to table this item until later in this, this meeting.
Thanks, Evan. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just move the other item up. So we will get to Agenda Item Number Three, Comment Letter on Bears' Years National Monument Resource Management Plan. And, uh, I am presenting that. So as you all know, last year we, um, became a cooperating agency on the Bears' Years National Monument, um, Management Plan and the, I think the deadline for a letter submission, it's Thursday. Is that? Is that correct or?
It's June eleventh.
June, June eleventh, sorry, not June sixth. Okay. So it's June eleventh. So, um, we did work on a letter. And I'll say that Trish and I worked on this letter, um, to the Forest Service and the BLM concerning the management plan. It is in our, uh, packet. And I would open, uh, this up for discussion. Mike?
Uh, in discussion, uh, again, this is within the bounds of different county. So my standpoint on we shouldn't be doing this. It's still, uh, it's still unclear. But I understand that my vote would probably get, uh, out, uh, right on that. Uh, and I really, uh, enjoyed, uh, some of the folks speaking on that and really think that his outline should be well.
Trish?
Well, two, two things. We are, actually are named as a cooperating agency, so they are asking for input on Grand County. So that's why we're providing input. And I do, I do agree with the comment from Cliff. We, we kind of, we tried not to touch on much, to be honest. Like, we didn't really wanna dive into target shooting and grazing and motorized. So, but I do think Cliff has a good point that we, you know, outline the access fund in front of Innate Creek as being these advocacy groups for, um, climbing. And I think we could probably do the same with riders, with respect as far as motorized travel. I, do you like a year down of that?
Okay.
Okay, something like that.
I guess the comment I was gonna make on that is I, you know, this, this is a very large plan and a, a very short letter. And the reason for that is for the most part, we didn't comment on things that weren't like of, of special interest to Grand County. And we focused on things that we thought San Juan County and the state were not gonna comment on. And so I, I think some of these, you know, overall travel plan issues, which is what I think Cliff was talking about. That's getting a lot of input from San Juan County. And I, I guess the idea is let San Juan County make those comments. You know, if we send in something slightly different to you, it might make a riff or something. So we, we weren't, at least, yeah, I, I thought the idea was not to say every single thing we think about the plan, but things we think about the plan that we think other cooperating agencies are not gonna comment on and that, you know, are, are of special importance to people who live in Grand County. Thanks. So it's, so in particular, tran, transportation, I'm guessing San Juan County is all over that one.
Yeah, I also, uh, appreciate, uh, a brief letter and, um, trying to speak from a high level. And also on Cliff's point of chicken corners being the second most commercially guided trip out of town, that, um, I think that there's a lot of other kind of economic interests from Grand County that are operating down there. And I think that this is, uh, got potential to change, um, some of those, uh, activities. And so I was interested in, um, expanding a conversation around some of, uh, mention around that. And I think that, uh, I sent an email last night, kind of throwing that out and, uh, whether it's a separate bullet point or added on to one of the other ones, I think even just a single line. Something about in anticipation of increased visitation, we hope responsible local outfitting and guiding opportunities, which both support our economies and provide additional stewardship and land manager support, continue as before. And I think just, uh, uh, to Cliff's point, a lot of times when, when these land management changes happen, there's kind of a constriction in what's allowed. And I think with, without a lot of land manager support necessarily increasing, I think outfitters do a good job of, uh, kind of supporting the land managers and, and being stewards of the resource. And, uh, I would like to see that protected or continued.
You want to have any thoughts on Evan's, uh, yeah, Bill?
I like his direction. I'd also like to see changes in the letter myself. Um, I'd like to remove that low impact statement in there. I believe that it should re, we recommend the plan not be overly restrictive to activities that take a low impact out because I think you're limiting a huge amount of people. Um, I'd like to see motorized included just before hiking or somewhere in the, let me there. I, I don't care where it's put in. But I do believe it should be part of this. We have a huge motorized community here, not just diet services. People could trailer in here, but this is a part of our community and we should represent that. We should be seeing here. So we're excluding somebody in that. But I'd like to have some discussions around this and see if we can change a few verbiages. The, the other thing, and I agree with Trish adding right of respect, but I would also like to see Blue Ribbon Coalition, although I know that we have a fair tainted view of it. And right now, they are very heavily involved in motorized community and in the state of Utah, let alone Grand County. So there's room for these climbing people. I think there's also some room for some of the other motorized side of things. You know, as a disclaimer, I'm not part of those, because I don't have it, but they are part of our community. We should be including them. And then to the overview, I, I don't think our letter is meant to be seen as something that is missing in San Juan counties. But I don't see any indication that we reach out to see if there was any attempt here to have some kind of collaboration with them. We shouldn't be at odds with another county here and we shouldn't be working hand in hand with them. We should be building on what they're doing, working with them. We shouldn't be seen as in conflict with them. Then there's another one down there in that whole point. Lastly, we see that need. I'd like to strike appropriately and then put in there by enforcing existing laws. I, I don't think that there's a huge need to dream up a whole bunch of new regulations to take care of what's already going on out there. I think if, if we were to impress upon the BLM and some of these other entities that they aren't doing a good job of taking care of enforcing the existing laws on the books. We don't need to add more laws. We need to do a better job of enforcing what's there. So those are just some recommendations I'd like to make. And I, uh, I really wish that this would have been passed around amongst the commissioners so that we all could have participated in it. I, I don't.
Kevin asked multiple times within meetings to have people help.
Are you speaking now or am I?
I'm, I'm, I'm stating that Kevin asked multiple times to have people help him.
This letter.
So people need to step up to the plate and we did.
You done?
Yeah.
Thank you. This letter wasn't circulated, is my point. And I think that if it would have been circulated, then we wouldn't be in here doing what we're doing right now, trying to make some changes for each little individual. So I think a little better moving this amongst the commissioners in the future would be well taken. But that's all.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, that's, that's a fair statement. I mean, we kind of, he did ask multiple times for people to help. Um, we, and Jac and I kind of put it together this weekend, you know, because we were under a timeline. So it, it's, it's a fair statement. We were pretty tight.
Right. It was a bit of a cost, but I prefer.
But, but Kevin did ask multiple different, I mean, two different, I believe in my memory, it's two different meetings saying, hey, wanna get this letter written. Get people to help.
Um, so I have a proposal. I'll, I'll just make it in the form of a motion and then, you know, we can, can debate. But, um, I think we, I move that we approve the letter with the following two additions. Um, one is something along the lines of what Evan said. And the second is inserting something that talks about, you know, that, you know, there are diverse user groups and we hope, you know, that the plan strikes a fair balance. I think we've got statements, similar statements in some of our other letters. So throw that, actually make, sorry, not, no, no motion. Let me just throw it out there. If, I'll make the motion if it looks like enough people agree. But, um, you know, I, but I, I don't. You know, these letters, you know, do have, have to make some choices of emphasis. And I, I think just throwing everything in, it kind of, you know, waters down the, the entire thing.
Okay. So did you say, are you making a motion?
Uh, I guess I, I started to, but then I, I don't wanna make a motion if like no one likes the motion. It'd be a waste of time. So wait, waiting for feedback on that, that idea. But, but again, the, the, the second part of it was just to, to acknowledge. I, I think one of the complaints was that this, this is, you know, and it is by design a narrowly focused letter. But we should also acknowledge that there's a, you know, a wide range of activities, including things like grazing that, um, you know, we're not planning on comment, commenting on. But, you know, just a, a general statement for, um, supporting a wide var, variety of uses, which I, I think is important in this plan in particular because it has this Native American aspect of it. And I think some earlier version of the plans were very unusual for federal land management. And we're, you know, kind of waiting that above a while. So I, so I, uh, the statement that we are supporting a variety of uses that carries more weight in this common letter than it would in nor, normal ones because they were on their, on the path to actually not doing that. So.
Uh, Mary, hand it up.
He answered. I was gonna just ask him a question, but.
I mean, we could manipulate that first, um, bullet to take out, as you mentioned, low impact and state something like diverse activities. Well, you know, kind of what you're saying. You know, maybe need to mention the activities, say, or however you wanna do that, however you wanna do so. Rework that first bullet. Something in that first ball, that first bullet. Do you want me to read it?
So how would you feel with something like, uh, we recommend that the plan support, uh, diverse recreation activities that may include, uh, I, I don't even know if we need to say may include. And hope that regulations of such opportunities not be unduly cumbersome while promoting responsible and sustainable practices. And just kind of take out the low impact, the list of activities.
Kind of, yeah. I mean, I, I think in general that, that sounds fine, but having sat through a lot of meetings when they're talking about previous situations of this plan, you know, that there's going to be restrictions, you know, that, and what the, your initial idea was, let's restrict everything, you know, like you, you can't walk up a wash, you have to stay on trail. It was, they were kind of taking restrictions that made sense, like, you know, near archaeological sites or. Or areas that are especially since they're near c- near creeks and just applying a very broad brush. So I think saying, you know, I think we should say, don't restrict activities. That doesn't change the plan very much. If we say, don't ex- don't restrict low impact activities, it's sort of telling them, don't go so far. If there is things that are lower impacted, you know, don't do any restriction over here because there's an archaeological site five miles away. So, I mean, I'm I'm okay with whatever you guys want to do, but it's, we're thinking about, you know, are we writing this letter just to make us and our constituents feel good? Or are we trying to influence what the B L M does? And if we are trying to influence the B L M, the Forest Service is good. The comments in the plan kind of tie into things that we're actually going to be making decisions on.
I think that's why we had that last bullet point and maybe I I wasn't able to articulate that. But trying to state that those areas that are rich in cultural wildlife, water resources, you know, are hopefully kind of. Would gain some kind of additional protection, but um but maybe I didn't. It's it's hard. There there was, there's a lot. There's a lot in that plan. There were things that I was going around with these two about, you know, the target shooting is is extremely restrictive. And I was trying to explain things like, oh, when I go to Del Bridge, I don't want to sight in my gut along the way. Now I can't do that. So but I, you know, there's so many, we could go, this could go on forever. And so we, I do think we have to try to.
I I still think that there's room that we could circulate this letter and put a little bit of comments into it. It it doesn't have to be specifically low impact activities. And, you know, Kevin, to your point, I I understand that you're trying to influence the B L M. So let's influence the B L M in a way that benefits all of our constituents, not just the low impact constituents. So let's make it more inclusive of everybody in this county and the recreation that goes on here. Whether they're of like minds to you or to me or to any one of us.
I guess just to clarify what I meant about influencing B L M, we could say, you know, all activities are great. You know, management's good the way it is, just keep it the same. I think that would not have much influence, because that's not one of the alternatives they're considering. I I think, you know, we have to focus on, you know, what's the range of plans we think they might actually approve and say things that might persuade them. So I I think, you know, we we can say what we believe, but if it's totally out of sync with the decisions they're making, then it it doesn't have an effect. That's, but it but again, I'm I'm happy for us to make some kind of decision.
So it has to be in by the eleventh.
Right.
Uh, do we want to days the fourth, like circulated for a couple of days? And give everybody and just say, wow, again, here's the teacher and me, you've got this timeline. If you want to comment, comment. If you don't, you don't. And.
How do we come to some sort of uh conclusion, not a public meeting, as to what the final letters are going to consist of? That's is the problem.
So so one.
For the challenge shock.
I mean, so one thing we could say is, you know, let's try to, you know, here's some broad goals for the revised letter, you know. Satisfy Evan with the guides or something and make it seem a little bit more inclusive and just whatever Jacque comes up with or Trish, you know, something like that. And then we'll, you know, we can ratify the letter afterwards. So that's giving some general guidance, but letting, you know, delegating to someone else to hammer out the details.
But in that hammering, you'll you'll allow people to, is there, do you want to give everybody a day or whatever to make comments? Then you hammer it out or I can hammer it out or?
Um, yeah, Stephen, actually.
There's a threshold for concern is lower, because it's a a letter to a another entity. It's just the input of the county. So while it is, it's best, you know, best to do these things as transparently as possible. I think you could put some parameters that would say, we seek to create a draft letter with additional edits that are more inclusive, uh, subject to. That captures it at the end of the day.
Okay, thanks Stephen.
I I also think that uh uh Kevin brings a good good point of targeting the letter to. Zones that they actually have questions around or uh, you know, things that maybe uh. I don't want to say influential, but then yes, if there's a question of, should we allow off-trail hiking in the zone? That by saying, hey, we think that um. That that's a worthy thing to continue to do down there. So um, I I think that that going very broad and all inclusive. And let's just all get along is going to kind of water down our statements. And so um originally, when this had come around, I I thought that it looked well to kind of address some of those things. That as the plans have evolved, um, but I'm happy to kind of authorize. Uh, one of the folks more familiar with the plan and uh to finalize the letter with a couple of edits. Within, I don't know if there's somebody that wants to take that on.
Um, that being said, I I I'm I'm pretty satisfied with the letter as as worked on, a couple of thoughts on that. I I think the I think the outfitter line is is good. And and to disclose, I've actually worked in the Bears' ears, not not in ten years or so, but I've worked for outfitters that worked in the Bears' ears and have done some guiding down there. And I agree with Evan that outfitters can be a very uh, you know, we're good stewards of the land. And and we're held to a bit of a higher standard than than general users. And I think that's valuable. And also, when I when I was working on the letter, the thing that that really stuck in my head was working on things that kind of coming coming from the Grand County perspective. Like 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 things that that affect our county, our county's citizens and then and then our county's economics. Like like we are put in there, you know, we are a staging um area for a lot of the visitors who go down there. So it is, we do have skin in the game, as it were, uh, with this plan. And it's, I think it's in our best interest to uh to comment as per that. So I think the outfitter aspect works for me. Um, and as far as as far as close comments, I I definitely, I I see that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to putting one line in there about. Uh, you know, just giving a nod to ride with respect and and as per uh motorized recreation. Um, and maybe calling out like northern San Juan County, you know, because that area is accessed through Grand County. Um, you know, some some similar languages we put in there for the climbing advocacy groups is is um. Giving right with respect to a nod also.
Made those notes, but I guess I didn't feel like, I didn't know how to approach it. So I think it was, it's great.
Yeah. And and then as regards the last bullet point, uh, I'll just read it. Lastly, we see the need to protect areas that are rich in cultural wildlife and water resources. Thus, areas be protected and regulated appropriately. I'm okay with striking that. I think looking, looking at the plan, I think a lot of those things have been actually addressed in the plan. Um, I I I like that, but I wouldn't be opposed. I don't necessarily know that we need to reiterate that. Uh, so those are, those are my thoughts on the plan.
So you're thinking taking out the last bullet, adding something.
Adding.
With Evan and then adding something about.
The thing with the access fund is that I, you know, the plan had called out a a a much more restrictive. Um, process for bolting. And I think that, you know, having safety anchors at the top of climbs, being able to be replaced when needed. Is um kind of on a a different, it's a different discussion than uh. You know, keeping trails open or closed or whatever. Um. So I'm I'm uh.
You think that's a little bit unnecessary?
No, I I. I think to, I I'm okay with including like ride with respect and I already forget the organization that he mentioned from San Juan County. I think that, I think that um a group like Blue Ribbon has a little different. Uh, goals than uh trying to keep climbs safe and people off the deck. So uh, I'm kind of, that's why I'm kind of a little more okay with like, let's call out the access fund. Or, you know, s- a safe climbing organization or somebody um in regards regards to not making. That overly restrictive. Uh, but.
Yeah, Kevin?
I mean, if if that's, I would just strike access fund in friends of Indian Creek. I mean, they probably know what you mean when you say access groups. And we don't typically name specific groups in these letters, so I would go. Yeah, I I don't see the name to the to name particular groups. The the other comment, you know, different ones I may be for is, I I think there can be a little bit of value in sort of saying, hey, you know, we. If there's something that there is already in the plan and we say we approve it out, it probably, it doesn't make any difference to how the plan works out. But it does improve our relationship with land managers. You know, people, people in the Forest Service and the B L M, they get lots of flack from local elected officials. Typically have a contentious relationship. And I know from talking to them that they really like, like it when people from Grand County say, no, you guys are doing a great job. I I think Grand County's, Grand County government has had, you know, strong relationships with the B L M and the Forest Service. I think that helps us a lot. So I think, you know, patting them on the back, I I see some value to having that and leather, e- even though it doesn't.
And your talk in regards to the last bullet point about.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I I'm I'm not, I've, I guess I lost track of the discussion of why it was being struck. But um, you know, if there's things in here that to sort of say that there's in a in a vague way, you know, that we like the plan and we think you guys have done a good job. That earns us, you know, that improves our relationship with.
What is, I I'm sorry, I'll get ready. What what do you think if we said something like we we support the uh the the plans? Um, uh, we support the plan's efforts to protect areas that are rich in culture, wildlife, water and resources. So it's just a slightly different wording.
Strike, strike the word need, see the need to protect and replace.
So or just support what they're ba- basically just supporting what they're what they're offering so far. Yeah, I'm not sure if that gets to what uh Bill's comment was about about that, that that uh what you didn't like about that last line, Bill?
My thoughts were, as it looked like we're asking them to add on additional regulation.
Okay, yeah, right, exactly. And that's.
I'm saying that they already have regulation in place. Let's just enforce what's there.
Or so so by supporting what's already there, then we then we're basically taking more of a neutral stance.
Yeah, I agree.
Mary? I think Bill meant no new rules and what I was saying is support the proposed new rules of the plan, but you know, not go beyond that. So I'm not sure how you understood.
Yeah, I was, I was just saying, pointing towards the protections that are in the plan, specifically the draft plan that we're. Yeah, not, but it it is, I think the wording does make a bit of a difference there, but I'm not not sure.
I was going to pretty much uh say what you said is that I think if we said lastly, we support the plans. The plan to protect areas that are rich in cultural wildlife and water resources. So I think that is really big for us, want those areas protected. And then we don't have to add appropriate, because they're already creating the plan to protect those areas.
Okay, so I can take a, oh, I'll, I can, do you want me to take the input from this conversation? And and make those changes that we've just discussed a little bit or?
I would move to authorize the chair to refine the comment letter as discussed on the Bears' ears National Management Resource Management Plan. And authorize him to send it before the deadline.
Okay, and I'll make sure everyone gets eyes on it before I do.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion on that? All right, call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All opposed. Motion passes six to one with Commissioner McCurdy in opposition. Uh, thank you all. All right, we will, it looks like Elisa's joined us, so we are going to move back to agenda item two. And that is the ordinance approving the amended development agreement for the alternative dwelling overlay district located at twenty-two thirty-one South Highway one ninety-one. Elisa?
Great, thank you, and sorry for the little mishap earlier. Um, so this.
See, you were highlighted there, Elisa, but I don't hear you.
Oh, that's odd. I'm. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Elisa, are you there?
I'm here.
It was a, it was a.
Yeah.
We had the public here.
We had the public hearing and we kept it open. We didn't get any comments.
So probably just.
We probably don't need to repeat, so if we could just make the motion. If I think that's fine.
Yeah, I wonder if there's anybody else on Zoom that can hear me. I guess the commissioners can't hear me. If anybody else on Zoom can hear me, that would be great to know.
Technical difficulties, okay. Uh, and but I do think we're pretty good on this. Does someone want to read the description from the package? Just for the for the public reiterate that as we've gone through that last.
The description as in motion or?
I'll get uh, the, there's some quotes of the land use code. It says the current deadlines for the site plan approval and certificate of occupancy are February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four and August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five respectively. At this time, the applicant has not received approval of the site plan. That was requesting approval of an amended development agreement following for a six-month extension to obtain site plan approval and certificate occupancy. As required per land use code section four point nine point six G. If approved, the new dates obtained such approvals would be August fifteen, twenty twenty-four and February fifteen, twenty twenty-six respectively. The applicant has requested this extension in order to facilitate minor site plan changes that would make the A D O space more livable for residents. It may not be employees of the onsite river guide company. The proposed changes will not change the overall layout of the approved master plan, which is conceptual.
All right, thanks Evan. Trish, great.
I move to um adopt the ordinance approving the amended development agreement for the A D O development. Located at two two three one South Highway one ninety-one, allowing for a six-month extension of the site plan approval. And certificate of occupancy deadline conditioned upon the following. The owner shall record the amended development agreement and the real property records of Grand County, Utah simultaneously with the ordinance prior to issuance of site plan.
All right, uh, motion by Commissioner Hadeen, second by Mc- uh, Commissioner McCurdy. Any further conversation before we vote? And I'll just add that this was uh subject of a public hearing at our last meeting. The public hearing was open until uh last Wednesday, which was uh for eight days. We received no public comment during that time. All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to agenda item four, consideration of county response to draft communications from Utah Office of the State Auditor. Um, I, we don't have a presenter on that. Uh, there was a response to this that was worked out primarily by uh the attorney, the um clerk. As well as Commissioner Walker and and the subject of some internal conversation. Um, Kevin, do you want to take?
I was, I mean, last time when we discussed this was in a closed session. I mean, I could just move to approve the letter or I don't.
Okay, I mean, we can, we can make a motion, then we can have have discussion after that.
Yeah, but like, what do you think?
Whatever the whatever the commission would like to do. I mean, the fact that the letters contained the packet, but it's up to the commission if it wants to. Um, discuss or debate the item. The letter is obviously drafted. It didn't, you know, I think some background information, which is yes, that we offered, there was authorization of the letter. Uh, to draft it. It was drafted by missionaries. They provided input. And that's where we're at. It's like any other letter, which allows the letter discussion, you guys can choose.
Yes, uh, and we had, you know, it was like, I know I commented on it. I saw other people commented on it. So we had many opportunities to make comments. And I I, my reading is that I think it states what we want to state clearly. And uh, I saw I'm going to make a motion to approve the letter to the office of the state of the auditor. Uh, of the state Utah auditors.
Thanks, Mary. I'll second. Okay, uh, motion to approve the letter from Commissioner McGann and a second from Commissioner Walker. And I'll open it up. Uh, Kevin?
I was just going to give some very brief background for people who, you know, for the previous things. Um, you know, the state, the state auditor's office was looking into how T R T revenue was sent. The way these things work is before they give their official letter, they give us a draft letter that gives us a chance to respond to it. And so this letter is our response. A- after we send this letter, they'll look it over. I don't know if there's going to be additional discussions, but they'll come up with a final letter, which will be public. And then we'll, you know, have our public response. So this is just, um, you know, the sort of preliminary back and forth become, before they come out with their.
Right.
Public opinion. Sound right to you or?
Yeah, this is the the first type of letter that I have had. Yeah, I think this is the the first type of letter that I've had in my tenure so far. Um, the letter is drafted away to the state auditor's office, um, that explains the position of the commission and. Uh, it theoretically wants its group consent, it'll explain the position of the commission, then likely they'll either, option one is reach back out to us and. The dialogue, uh, theoretically, option two is they could say. We disagree, and they uh publish whatever they want to next, and likely they will call them findings and. So those are really the two, two options, or, you know, option three, they said, never mind, but likely it's going to be probably option one or two. And then we'll have some follow-up communication, likely they'll do so, uh, just, just for additional information, the reason why. It was a very quick turnaround is because they provided, you know, a smaller window for us to respond, and I believe the. The time to the responses tomorrow.
Yeah, it is tomorrow, yeah.
And so that's one of the reasons why this was something that moved very quickly.
Hence the, the emergency meeting a few days ago so that we could have a preliminary discussion about this.
Right.
And I just want to make sure everybody was, uh, everybody was given the.
Per- permission to, yeah, make notes on the letter, yeah. No, that's right, that went out to everybody, thanks, Mike.
In reading that Google Doc, uh, it did take me time, uh, to design quite a bit of that, uh, I mean, this is not a short letter. Uh, in the draft letter, uh, in response to the draft. Uh, I do have many talking points. Uh, in contradiction to our current letter. Uh, I actually have some that compare with our current letter, uh, because we're sending off, uh, some things are good, some things are bad. I didn't know this was appropriate back top.
Well, I guess my question for you is why did you not? So I just start putting them into the Google Docs so that they can be addressed in the draft.
The letter has, yeah, it's been open for. Yeah.
And like I, I tried to do the Google Docs and Docs, it's not, they're not Docs, they're Docs. And I just, I, that was one night, and then I finally stopped trying because. I was afraid I was going to end up erasing things, and so I just wrote out my concerns and the things I didn't like about the letter. And sent it to the people who I appreciate, this was hard work.
Yeah.
We have a group of people who spent hours and hours combing, finding, you know, finding. I mean, yeah, I saw, I totally support all the work and effort, I felt feel like we all had. A ample opportunity.
See, Evan, have his hand up and then Bill.
I was just gonna say that, uh, what was shared with us was a internal draft document from the state. And I appreciate them, uh, kind of reaching out and giving us the opportunity to collaborate on. You know, their initial things, I think because it's a draft and was labeled internal, that if we want to. Uh, discuss the content of what was in that letter from the state. And a response there to that it should probably be in closed session. Uh, I think it'd be different if they'd sent us an open letter that was, you know, but that's just kind of my, yeah, gut, gut feeling around it, so.
Uh, Bill has seen it first.
So I've, I've got a couple of things, um, and. I know that we all had a chance to weigh in on this behind closed doors, but this is our opportunity to weigh in on it in the public's eye. So there's nothing wrong with with the questions that Mike has, if they're different than yours, I think this is a good opportunity for him to bring some of those up. If he wants to, I've just got one that I'd like clarification, maybe Gate can help me with, but it says that. We corrected the error, I believe, in, um, January of twenty twenty-four. Regarding the different percentages that were backed up, but I believe our twenty twenty-four budget. Had the improper one, so how did we correct it in January without doing a budget amendment?
Right, ju- the accounting entries with the um, the, the, the split that was made in error. Um, tho- those, those were corrected, um, for receipts for twenty twenty-four. However, the, the budget would need to be amended to, to reflect the appropriate split.
So that's something we still have to do moving forward and.
Correct.
Okay, well, and, and I'll let Mike go, I know he's got some questions there, I don't hold up on them, and I'll come back to some.
Mike?
Uh. I agree, we had, uh, our closed session discussion on it, uh. Finding out information, uh. Definitely could have been, uh, kept differently. In my eyes, we should. As pertains to the subject of T R T, which is transient road tax, the people who have input on transient road tax rates. Uh, should be in the know of the questions that were raised, uh, in this. Uh, and they should be people that we are referencing questions to, uh, in any form. In any way, we should be referencing questions and getting feedback from people who actually collect the transient tax. Uh, on their opinions on the letter that, uh, that we should be sending against the questions. Uh, so that took me a little more time than just one closed session to do. Uh, and to keep both closed session information, uh, within, uh, retained in closed session. Uh, and to find out relevant information, so I'm sorry, still on Google Doc. But the timeline was a little on talking to people about transient tax.
Uh, Mary?
I think, I, I, you know, I do think that people that collect transient have, uh, do have a voice. They have a voice through the tribal council. Such, uh, this is an internal issue. Not like that, you know, it will become. It will become where you're talking about, but that's the next step. I think this is a previous step to the point that we. Go forward with those topics.
Uh, I, I guess I, I was gonna respond slightly differently to Mike, I mean, I think there, there are certainly policy questions that we debate during budgeting and we can debate other times of the year about. You know, we, how, like, if one thing that we could do is spend, you know, all the money on. On advertising, you know, even the mitigation money, that's something we, we could do. But this, this auto report was about, you know, wh- whether rules are broken or statutes were misinterpreted. And I think that, that's kind of a narrow legal question or accounting question, and so I guess it's not, I don't think we take a public opinion poll about. You know, does the statute mean this or that, or, you know, whether our accounting entries, so, so to me, this letter is about, it isn't about the big broad issues of T R T. Which we, you know, we do discuss, you know, multiple times in the year, is about a narrower is- narrower issue of, of, you know, following the rules.
In response to that, our first answer is, we didn't follow the rules, like we admit to it. Uh, should we want input on how? Further following the rules and what we're gonna do with the. Uh, my, my retort to the question one wasn't that. We say in our letter, we agree that the county used the wrong split for incoming T R T revenue from March twenty-two. To December twenty-three, this was a clerical error and has been corrected as of January twenty twenty-four. Fortunately, both fines. Both funds ten and sixteen has significant positive balance, so we can correct the error by transferring six hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Four percent total T R T receipts for March twenty-two through December twenty-three from Fund Ten to Fund Sixteen. Uh, yes, we can correct that, but the people who actually put the T R T funds in that. Uh, would have probably wanted us to be promoting the county using six hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Uh, that we could, we admit that we made that mistake already, so that was my input on that. I, I wasn't asking to keep that in closed session, I was just.
We, we'll still have that money available to use in a way, once it's, well, I mean, the, the transfers and that money gets, gets, gets.
In addition to that question, are we not in this meeting saying that we should use six hundred three thousand dollars, six hundred thirty-three thousand dollars? Nine hundred twenty-one dollars, sorry. Uh, immediately in making it a campaign.
Well, I mean, we have that option anytime, I don't think that's a discussion.
We, we have a reserve balance, there is, there isn't a precise, I mean, there's a, there's a long-term relation because there's a limit on how big our reserve can be. But the reserve fluctuates independently of spending fluctuating, so th- those numbers are not. They're indirectly tied, they're not directly tied, so yes, I think in future budgeting meetings, the next time we discuss spending T R T, there's gonna be more to spend than. Yeah, than there was, that's, that's the consequence, so.
There'd be less to spend on mitigation side, or are we gonna make a difference?
Uh, well, the, anything, I mean, we, we spend money, mitigation in effect is subsidizing the general fund, so.
Okay.
And, and, and we, unfortunately, I mean, it, it would have been more serious if we didn't have a general fund balance. And suddenly we had to come up, you know, with six, six hundred thousand dollars and we, you know. And we didn't have the money in the bank, but we do have, you know, much more money than that in the bank, so it's, it's like, you know, our, our check, you know, we have separate checking accounts and the. To- the total amount's correct, but, you know, some that should have been here, uh, here, has been being corrected, but it's not like, you know, suddenly we can't pay a bill or something.
Mary?
And historically, one of the reasons we have a larger than average. Uh, fund balances because of two thousand and twenty, we, we didn't blink for a period where we didn't advertise at all. And, uh, yes, in fact, I don't think we advertised at all during two thousand and twenty, that was when Elaine was here, because. You know, we were concerned about too many people coming to Moab, and it's just a small hospital, and we didn't even have an I C U. So we, we had a year that's, but yet people came anyway, we ended up collecting tax that year. Without spending it as we usually do, and it's, and so this every year, the tribal council. Presents what they, how they want that money to be spent. They presented to us during the, during the, uh, budget hearings. And, and then we usually take them at their words, maybe we might tweak it a little bit, but not too much. Or we might say we wanted to put a share or here, but, uh, it's, it comes from the tribal council. Recommend how the promotional side of the money is spent.
I agree. Uh, Bill, you had your, no, get it.
Well, you know, I'm not excited about the way this has been handled, I'm not, I think that. And I've learned that the county could have informed the public what was in the state audit's report without releasing the draft. We could have explained to the public what was in there and we chose not to, I'm, I'm not excited about the way this is going down. And we needlessly kept the public in the dark here, and that's. It's unacceptable for a lot of reasons. Firstly, the public has the right to know, and we had an opportunity to give that information to them, and we chose to do otherwise. And then we moved this letter into a closed community and you came up with some explanations here that I'm not totally in agreement with. The state auditor's report contains some very serious findings, and I strongly disagree with the approach that the commission leadership is taking here. I, I don't agree with this, we've known for months that we've had problems in our financials, so we're in no position to be. We're basically dictating to the state auditors where they're wrong and we're right, and I disagree with that approach. It's, it is not at all the way this should be going. And I've been working to improve things for months, it's been an uphill battle fighting on the audit and the budget committee meetings. To try and get something as simple as a financial expert to advise us and. There's any one of a number of things that we could have done in the past, since the budget, budget meeting started. That would have brought us to a better place right now than we are. There's so many things that we could have done, and yet there's been pushback, and there's been pushback. And I don't understand that, it really, what it comes down to, and the state auditor suggested that there's an attitude problem. We have an attitude problem, and that's gotta change. We need to start accepting the responsibility that the state auditor found and find ways to correct that rather than try and tell them they don't know what they're doing. That this is the wrong approach in my mind, it's, that there's no way I can support this approach.
Kevin?
Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm very confused by Bill's comments, that this, that's exactly what they were asking us to do, they say. We tentatively, you know, think, you know, this, 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 and this, do you agree? And we say, well, we agree with these three, you know, we disagree with these other five ones, that's what the letter's doing. And, and that's exactly the response they're looking for, so I don't, I, I'm, I'm confused that you're saying that's somehow not. I mean, it just, Trish.
Uh, so really quick, this is gonna be a strange statement, Bill, but I do agree with you, I, I think, and I made this statement to the. To the, to the administration we do have now, we are supposed to have a social media presence, and I think it would have behooved us this week to. You know, put out there like, here's what's going on, here's what we can say, here's what we can't say right now, and I think that hopefully in the future. We start moving in that direction where, you know, we can disseminate what we can disseminate, because what happens when we don't. Is there's a lot of misinformation floating out, there are a lot of assumptions, people fill in the gaps with a lot of junk, I'll just put it that way. Um, I disagree with you stating that there's pushback, I think the internal audit committee, the three of us are moving along, we're. Looking at a financial advisor next week, and so I think we're moving in that direction. Um, for you to say you don't support this response, we went into closed session, we had a discussion with all of us, that was a time for all of us. To give our feedback, um, you didn't have much to say at that time, I don't know why, and then we also had the letter, and again, it was a time to give a lot of. Feedback, I mean, when I was on the Google Doc, there were other people on there at the same time, the bubbles were moving, and so that, those are our times to give our. Feedback, so to do it now, to me, is a, is a little, you're grandstanding a little bit, I'm just gonna be that same. I think that's the best way to put it.
Amongst my list here of, of points that I did not put to that Google Doc, that I see that I should have, uh, even more so. Uh, we, we say in conclusions, uh, the, our conclusion session of the draft report, we strongly disagree. With some of the statements in the draft. I know this is a draft response, or a draft letter to a draft letter. In anticipation of a public letter, but we are, I, I see us picking fights and we really should. Be wording this, I, I pick up down the semantics, we really should be saying we're willing to work with. Uh, not the stone wall, we strongly disagree, uh, with some of the statements, uh. Even, no matter what their concerns are in their draft letter, we should be willing to work with them, uh, in a sense of. At least looking at, uh, their, where they got their information and where we get our information in comparing notes, but we should be working together with. Uh, the auditor, not direct wall of agreement, there is a difference.
So maybe kind of some kind of statement like, thank you again for the opportunity to review your draft report, draft. Raises a variety of different issues, we think our interpretations are reasonable and defensible, and I think that they're asking for our feedback and. I think that there are spots in their letter that are off the mark, and so I think that, you know, coming to the table and. Thanking them for the opportunity is a, a good thing to do.
And, and I think they, they, they did, they gave us a draft and, and asked us to respond, this is, this is a great. I think, I think this is a good response, I think we do generally disagree with the number of the things they put on there, I think the things that we, uh. Gave up are, are legitimate and, and this is, I don't, I don't see any problem at all with the process or the content, I'm. I'm fine with the letter personally, Mary?
Yes, this, uh, we've had, we've had the state auditor's, uh, question on us in the past, they, uh, we were questioned. To one and a half years ago, almost exactly, as to, uh, how we were, our open and public meetings process. They came down, they met with each one of us, we worked hard, we, uh, you know, presented our evidence. And we were accused of not following the rules, and we said, well, we, we, we disagree with you. We disagree with you, we strongly disagree with you. Well, it's what we did, I met with them, I have a good relationship with these people, I know Seth, I visit with them when I go to the Capitol. And, and then they came back and said, oh, we agree with you, in fact, you guys do a better job at opening public meetings. Back to you have two opportunities for the citizens to speak, is commendable, some co- you know, no, so. opportunities for the citizens to speak is commendable some co- you know no so and that we handled it that way this is the process they tell us they think we did this we we respond they respond and then they then there's an official response at the end it's not combative to say you disagree that is not combative it's even if you say you strongly disagree that's the part of the process we told them we strongly disagreed in the past and they came back patted us on the back and said we did it better than every shot so I would like to call for a vote
alright I think we've all had a chance to weigh in a couple of times each anyway um so I will call for a vote all let's see the motion is on the table and uh Mary made the motion Kevin seconded it all those in favor of the motion raise your hands all opposed motion passes five to two with commissioners Winfield and McCurdy in opposition
alright and speaking of citizens to be heard we will now uh it is after six o'clock so we have our second citizens to be heard session anyone in the chamber like to come forward and make a uh statement come forward yes ma'am in the back just introduce yourself and you'll have uh three minutes to speak
I'm Brittany Melton and um I just wanted to maybe look at all of you guys and and say one thank you for sitting in the chair two I would really really love transparency so um when you when you give out one of your letters and I know it's a response but it would be really great to know what you're responding to and I think you guys probably could have spoke a little bit better to that I'm still trying to understand so I'm still learning but I definitely think that it's important for us citizens need to know some of the things that you guys are talking about um and then when we see these responses where I think Commissioner McCurdy talked to about the conclusion um and basically uh it sounds like the state kind of um accusatory said you know you guys have deliberately done some of these things um that was a big concern of mine so I I emailed I tried I looked really in depth at what was going on but I had nothing so um a little more transparency out of you guys and maybe just a few comments would have been great to just kind of know um so that's just my comment um I appreciate what you guys do
thank you anyone else in the chamber like to come forward and make comment at this time anyone on Zoom here alright uh we'll move on to our consent agenda uh today on the consent agenda pull up our bills um uh ratification of county bills and those bills are in the amount of uh nine hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents uh payroll total payroll amount of four hundred and four thousand one hundred two dollars and eighty-five cents or a total bills and payroll amount of one million three hundred twenty-seven thousand eighteen dollars and six cents uh consent agenda item B access and storage agreement between Williams Pipeline and Grand County item C Grand County and the state of Utah annual court security contract item D volunteer appointment to the Grand County Public Library Board item E independent contract agreement for the twenty twenty-four Grand County Fair for Austin Williams and uh item F ratification of the license rate of entry for LB Moab owner and Grant County
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented
thanks Kevin alright uh motion to approve consent agenda from Commissioner Walker second from Commissioner McCurdy all those in favor of approving the consent agenda raise your hands and the motion passes unanimously six to zero with the commissioner um again absent um alright we've reached the end of our uh general business items we're onto discussion items we have one discussion today and that is discussion of uh the recently passed SB two fifty-eight um I guess I'll turn it over to let's see again Kevin and I decided to put this uh a discussion item on so SB two fifty-eight it was a Senate bill that was passed that um gives I guess uh uh authority to um actually uh Stephen do you have a better grasp of the whole uh SB two fifty-eight or or Kevin I
I was just gonna say that
yes
and uh it made some changes to focal to the ability for the the creation of a municipality or a preliminary municipality and if certain certain qualifications were met then you could have basically your own city and so within within the section ten dash two A dash five O two it states the the major requirements that there's a continuous area it's not a first or second class county that it's not within point two five miles of an existing municipality and then they filed for a feasibility request and so those are just some of the some of the terms but if they meet some of the terms and and that it has to be within the same uh same county if they meet some of those terms what they could do is initially file for a feasibility study with the lieutenant governor's office to create their own municipality and the idea is eventually they'll start having the ability to create their own their own city so to speak and so what happens they reach out to and this has already happened they reach out to the GIS coordinator and that's James Murphy here with the county and they inquire they check and make sure uh that initially officially the applicant meets the qualifications of the preliminary municipality and if they do then they start going through the steps to to view if this area has the ability to take on the necessary uh steps uh becoming uh a municipality and then once they well once they demonstrate that they can move forward with starting to do zoning and some of those other provisions and obviously in the context that we're speaking of we have an entity that currently has applied for a preliminary municipality I don't know if they've selected a particular name but it's been filed by I believe uh the Miller Group I don't know I don't have right in front of me the exact application but if you one second I can find it
great and I would summarize it it's it's a bill that seems designed to let the King Creek developers sort of write their own zoning code I mean that that's that's the effect
and it seems like it was was specifically targeted to Grand County and and I think the discussion here starts with it was it it escaped our attention during the legislative session uh more or less even though it apparently was more or less just custom designed for this particular development
yeah I I remember talking me shortly after we found out I was talking to Sophia Fisher and she of The Times Independent and she said oh yeah I heard about that the same to Grand County so you know word word from her you know state legislature expert was you know this is this was a bill trying to Stephen you wanted to say something
yeah I if if the commission wanted the information about filed the um yeah the applicant slash owners were King King Creek Preservation and Development LLC Delaware Limited Company GH Miller Family Holdings LLC Utah Limited Company and primary contact and sponsor was Craig Weston and then they would send a copy to Snell and Wilmer LLP those were the individuals that have signed off on the preliminary municipality and they filed that with the signatures and they delivered that on
May first I heard
yes it was received by the lieutenant governor's office when they first
and and that was the very first day of the new legislation took
correct yeah it took effect uh May first twenty twenty
it's my understanding there's forty-five days from the time that they submitted to the senate governor's office for it to be transmitted to me to be sort of officially received
yeah and they they reached out to oh sorry okay so what happened originally is they reached out to um directly to James and then Matt Sinceros responded to it and in the communications that we had there's a little bit of back and forth uh because Matt was trying to understand what exactly they they were looking for and I don't know if they've heard if you received this uh email chain but they said hey we wanna get some information and that kind of at first said well looking for it they they said well we can reach out directly to the county clerk's office uh according to statute because the statute itself puts on obligations on county or to make sure that it's complied with and so uh that's kind of blow by blow and that's what we know up to date
great uh Trish
so reading this stuff is not my forte but I was reading through it today and I'm just kinda and it's just something I you know I don't know if we wanna start breaking it down piece by piece but one thing I noticed in one of the sections was that it has to have sufficient water um to become a municipality and I would say that's currently up for debate so I'm just kind of throwing that out whatever direction that we're going and then they also use this verbiage that I felt was kind of interesting that said this municipality would be necessary to connect separate parts of a shared community interest and I guess I was confused as to what that meant and would that apply I don't think I would consider that area a connection of anything uh but anyways those are just little clips that I again it's not my forte to read through that stuff but I was trying to just pull out themes of interest so anyways
I'm gonna go with Trish uh not my forte to read the league lease of this bill but it seems I I'll go back to stating my previous point we should have worked with them and tried to get some things in our CUP guidelines or at least the conditions on our CUP this I mean it it's pretty blatantly that it was uh at least our some of our conditions
I mean this this legislation was passed before the CUP was up for consideration and more or it addresses zoning more than does CUP so I think this was regardless of the CUP this was this was gonna happen no matter what it happened
had happened before yeah um I guess I was just I I think um you know the agenda of some reason may be able to spurs I wasn't proposing proposing to get into all the the legal details of the bill it's more you know why you know we hire a lobbyist you know why didn't we find out about this until you know after May first and I think Jacques he's talked with Cody maybe you wanna
yeah I I have I have talked to Cody we do hire lobbyists and we hire lobbyists specifically to 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 kind of track down this kind of legislation that specifically aimed at the county and and Cody flat out said that he missed it um he ri- he reads through the he read through the language of the bills as he reads through many he said it you know it was a technical bill there's nothing um that flagged it for him um but he he definitely conceded uh the point to me that 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 that's his job and he 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 missed this one and and um yeah and he I think he could have uh I don't I don't know I I'm disappointed that he missed it for sure I I do think Cody does a great job for us and I'm a fan of Cody but in this case he definitely I think I think failed us at the county um but um but yeah and some things that he did talk about working on were um were were UAC for sure and working you know UAC is is a organization that that things can come up with um so
and and my my understanding was that UAC's lobbyists didn't know that it was a bill having to do with Grand County and I'm did they tell any of us I mean I do any of us like Mary or Bill
I know they I did not know until I talked to Brandy and I Brandy Grace the head of UAC and I asked her you know I we had probably five phone calls back and forth uh and I said you know it would be nice to give you know we pay dues to UAC too and when she said they specifically said that this was targeted towards that county and I said well that that would have been a nice that we deserve to be know to know that there was a bill being introduced that was targeting Grand County and we went around in circles about if I dropped the bill you know I went to a lot of those meetings they're very hard a lot of times they don't get into the details of the bill and I also watched the committee meeting and they didn't get into the details of the bill I mean it was really in and on the floor it wasn't I mean it was really undercover but UAC knew one thing I did get out of I had Brandy and I were gonna work on it I think we need two set we need two uh lobby organizations in UAC uh one for rural counties and one for urban's counties and although we are called a rural county and we're a class five county we have the issues of an urban we have the same issues of Park City Salt Lake we're we're dealing with the same issues we're 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 mu- much more aligned with those counties and so she said she was going to look at it talk to her uh people to see if perhaps next year that we could have one that geared but you know that we talk more about bills that are geared towards uh urban counties as opposed to rural counties and both so I mean we you know but I I I am still disappointed in UAC I think when they heard it was for Grand County should have been uh spoken I only have one more comment I do think it would be help us right now to ask for a Zoom meeting with Senator Senator Bramble is retiring I think this is the end of his tenure
that's right
and representing Doug Duncan Danny Dunigan Dunigan and spot talked to him and asked what you know but you know wha- wha- what was the purpose of this bill what was your hope to gain was this targeted at Grand County I think we need to talk to him and we need to there's only one person that voted against this bill and it was a Republican every Democrat voted for so it was like you talked about lack of transparency there was a huge amount of lack of transparency um so I moving forward I would like to have a Zoom meeting with Senator Bramble and Representative Dunigan and uh find out uh if there's different senators and representatives that we can work with to maybe take bring this back to the floor and tweak it you know let uh the Democrats know know about it I and I I that's how I would like to move forward is to have a conversation dog and I was just say why
Trish
yeah I mean it's definitely catering to a particular interest and and I don't think that's how the state legislature should be writing bills to cater to certain in this case developers that's my that's just a statement that I'll make and Mary I like the idea if UAC breaks it out but maybe it's or I don't know how to describe this but to me it's almost like gateway communities but not I mean the reality is like Washington Summit Grand San Juan's becoming this these counties that uh are just heavily you know our economies are spinning around tourism I think we're dealing with things that other counties are not specifically in the development realm uh so that's a really good idea and and the next year I think going into legislative session we probably need to pull a few commissioners that are just dedicated to following bills and not we can't you know we have to pretty yeah it's I know I know I know I agree but just just thought it's really hard
you know I went back to my notes for the day that that went through UAC back in February and I always put every single bill that we vote on and on that bill there was a question that's all I have on that page so I have no idea it didn't bring any interest to me it was dealing with municipalities and certainly on my radar now I agree with Mary that everybody except one Republican voted on this and I don't believe for a minute the Senator Bramble has that much power and I don't believe that it was getting to that many people you because there's some of the smartest people in the state in my mind so I don't think that somebody snuck this by every Democrat and every Republican except one and there's there's even some supposed experts weighing in out there that this was passed in the last minutes of the session I I've got the record here it was on the session it went through the Senate three times it it was read time and again and passed unanimously every time the question for Cody should be why was this so popular it's really it's why is this so popular with the entirety of our Republicans and Democrats I I never once heard of this at UAC so I'm I don't understand what you're saying that UAC knew about this I did and if if there was a chance to know about it why I I don't think it was at UAC and we can go right back to Bill Winfield's budget which everybody in here has thought about but why not increase right back to Bill Winfield's budget, which everybody in here has thought about, but why not increase seven commissioners' budget? And start expecting some people to go out of the state and, and not, keep in mind that when you go up to the state, that's not a place or a time to, to stand on your sword and say, I disagree with everything. You have to literally work with those people and build relationships with them. And those relationships don't come in an antagonistic form, at least not a relationship that will allow us to have some sort of conversation with them when these things happen. You can build that kind of a relationship, but it won't garner anything in this county whatsoever.
Uh, actually, Stephen wanted to weigh in for a second.
So just when I, when I went up to UAC the first year, uh, they, and we were there, I think both Mary, Jacques, myself, uh, Commissioner Winfield. We went to UAC and they had like a rapid fire session of all the bills where they came in and explained the bills in forty-five seconds or a minute. And so they walked up and said, this is SB whatever, and they run through it really quick, hey, here's what they're trying to do, boom, boom, boom. And then they say, alright, ready? Everybody's gonna vote. And everybody clicks and you either vote that the UAC's going to support it, seek more information or oppose it. And it goes super quick. And so, you know, I, I agree with Commissioner Winfield that one, one lobbyist, the difficulty is you have seven commissioners with seven interests and a lot of times the interests are the same. Uh, you cannot replace the amount of manpower that seven, seven people have with, with just one individual. And I know Cody likely does really, you know, works very hard on a lot of things, but Grand County's not his only client. And so I would encourage the commission to get involved with UAC, to go up, uh, to go to the meetings, because the meetings are really important, but everything, no one has time for like, it is, you think we're, we're short here with the citizen spirit? They are just boom, 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 go, go, go. And if you don't go up and if you don't have the relationships, you're gonna get passed. And then the other problem is these bills move so fast and that the people in the know, they're on version eighteen when the public knows about version two. So, those are my thoughts. If, I, I would highly encourage the commission um, to dedicate the time and the resources to go up there, especially if there's things that are important. And a lot of times, uh, you know, Cody, when he's looking at all the different vantage points for all his different clients, whether he can remember, that's one thing, but individuals, when we sit in that room and we think in that UAC, in that forty-five seconds that they run it through, you might go, oh, I think this has negative impact on Grand County.
Uh, Kevin?
Um, yeah, I mean, I certainly agree and, and we've said this year after year that, you know, we should be trying harder to have an influence. It's, it's hard, but you know, there's probably still a way to, to improve things. Um, I just, I think it's kind of serious that UAC lobbyists knew about this and didn't tell us and I just want to make sure I understood you correctly, Bill. As far as you know, and according to, you know, they said nothing to you.
I have one mention of that bill and it's.
Okay, I just, if I, if I say UAC didn't know, I just want to make sure I'm telling the truth and, and I, you know, they could have sent a, a one sentence email, hey, Grand County should look at this bill. I mean, it's not that hard, so.
They could have been given to a secretary or somebody.
So I, but I, I do think we have taken steps in the past. I mean, I, you know, not, not all of us go up and spend the amount of time that bills are recommending, maybe we should. But we have, we spent a lot of money on a lobbyist that didn't work this time. And a few years ago, we were debating whether to stay in UAC or not. We were pretty dissatisfied with, you know, it seemed like it was mostly, their lobbying efforts were working against our interests. We had some long talks with them and I think ultimately it was decided that U, UAC has some good lobbyists and Grand County could benefit from that and that's one of the reasons that we stayed with them. But if those good lobbyists at UAC, UAC can't even be bothered to inform us that there's a bill targeted at us. I mean, I, I think it's something we need to think about. Um, I do want to, I, to me, this bill was very clearly targeted at Grant. I mean, I don't know, most of, I think, you know, you make a point, why did everybody vote for it? And I think most legislatures didn't know, but the same thing happened a year ago. We had the bill that was aimed, you know, that affected exactly one service district in the entire state, you know, the one on King Creek. And that was also introduced by Bramble. And I think he's got a track record of doing favors with the, these developers. Um, so there's, there's, and if you also, if you look at the way the bill's written, it seems to be fairly narrow, narrowly tailored to this situation. You know, there can only be two of these a year, it expires in six years. You know, giving just enough time for the process in the bill to run its case, run its course. So I, I, I do think this, that this was narrowly tailored for Grand County, just like the bill a year ago on, on the uh, service districts.
So I'm gonna, um, Stephen, at one point to make it and I'll go, Mary, uh, Mike and Trish.
Just timing, just, just timing of this, their original application started a few years back and they were informed the C U P was going to be a, an element that was required. So this, this would have been at, at the time that the session was ongoing, they had applications.
Uh, go ahead, Mary.
They, they do get things passed, uh, senators and representatives. When we went through uh, the change of government, when we, I can't, now I can't remember the number. We used to be able to rattle it off in the house. Uh, it was a house bill. And I called, the minute I found out about it, I called Jenkins and uh, 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 Watkins and Albrecht. And said, why, how did you vote for this? Why did you vote for this? This is throwing Grand County into just a tizzy. And they says, oh no, you guys are grandfathered in, it does not affect you. It got by them. They pass bills without knowing the details because you can't know the details of over a hundred bills. They are smart people, I'm not denying that, but the way the system is set up, they vote for bills not knowing what they're voting for. And that was a perfect example when our two representatives at the time, because we had two, and our senator had no idea, none. And then I called, you know, called a couple other people and they didn't know. So I could see how it can be presented that it's a no, you know, it's not doing that much and they, they're looking at every, and that every, every senator or representative is sponsoring a bill, so they're paying attention to that, not paying attention to the other bills. It's not a very effective system and things get voted in without people knowing what.
Yeah, there's a million factors that go on in political campaigns, one of those as well. Anyway, Mike.
Uh, just letting everyone here know, in that discussion, and we continue. Uh, everyone here is a voting member, as an elected official, or in a voting member of UAC. Uh, you can literally say, I've been in the room and saw Mary on the Zoom, I've been on the Zoom and saw Bill in the room. Uh, I mean, I, I, you can toss in at any moment and be a voting member. And not to point out the obvious, but we are a large commission, so we're actually a large body, right?
Yeah, and it goes to resources.
Yeah.
I go to one. I, I.
Do you have another comment, Trish? Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I, reluctant to throw UAC too far under the bus here. But as far as considering whether or not we want to stay members of UAC, it was a UAC representative that took me up to President Adams, which in the month following then was a follow-up phone call while I was in Nepal, which resulted in the fourteen point three million for the Raptor State Park. And I can point to other places that UAC has helped me bring money back to this county. So maybe somebody dropped the ball on this bill and they didn't think to notify Grand County, but I would be real careful at totally alienating. That's an organization that's made up of twenty-nine counties and it would be advisable to be twenty-eight. And one being against them. There's too many benefits that we, we receive from there. And I can go on and list other ones, but those come from being part of UAC and they come from being part of Serta Up and Price. Those organizations have a record of helping us. And where this one came from, I have no idea, but as Mike just said, we're a seven member board. We should have a leg up on other counties. We should be hands down above San Juan County with just three commissioners. When we can be up there watching all these bills and bringing back appropriations and doing whatever we want, we have the opportunity. Every one of you could go up there and make your case for whatever little effort that we want to do. So I'd be real careful about suggesting we drop out of UAC.
I might have hunted at it a little bit. I think those comments are fair.
Any, any further um, discussion, Kevin?
Well, I, I just maybe some ta- takeaways. Uh, you know, one, I, I think we should talk with Cody in more detail about how he's gonna look out for bills that affect us. Apparently whatever he was doing in the past didn't work. I think we should tell UAC's lobbyists explicitly, please notify them.
We need to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, that's a simple step we can take. I, I do think we're right, you know, we, we could do more lobbying and, and doing that, but um, and, and then I think this whole other topic about, you know, the legal status of this bill and constitutional challenges, and I think that's a discussion for a, another day. Um, and also just understanding what the, you know, if the bill, you know, isn't struck down, you know, what, what's the timeframe and the mechanics of doing it? So those, those are both things we probably want to know about, but maybe not today, so it'd be really cool to be done before seven o'clock.
Um, yeah, further thoughts, Evan?
I would even just add on to that, you know, like a, another. We're all aware, you know, there was just a recent uh, news story about the Senate being a majority of developers. It's not like shocking that these custom tailor-made bills are coming through. But what does shock me is that the, the governor continues to sign them. And so we're starting to build this laundry list of, you know, this year, this law was crafted for this one project in Grand County. This year, this other bill was crafted for one thing, to change the laws. And I think that, you know, in uh, communications, I would add the governor's office on that list to UAC and senators. And that he's ultimately putting his pen to it and kind of asking him like, why buy us, why this, why are you pulling the rug out from under us? Changing the rules left and right, so.
Alright, um, any, anyone else on discussion or that goes productive? Okay, uh, looks like we've reached the end of our uh, agenda here and it is before seven o'clock. My goodness, I can't believe it. And um, I will now call uh, this meeting to a close at uh, six forty-four. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.